A meeting to order and began by ruling a statement for the record. Concerning the closed meeting of the town council of Monday, June 10, 2024. On June 10, 2024, the mayor and council members then in open session, President Mayor Keller and council members during the event, hours of staff news and mass, Stephen Kostaskey and Phil Schott, Town Manager Barbara Matthews and Assistant Town Manager Taylor Bieber were also in attendance. At 9:58 PM, council members should move to go into closing session for Senate Environment, Health Division's Article Section 3, which we are called Article 1. To discuss the employment compensation candidates for employment overhauled, the town council has jurisdiction and other personnel matters that affect this individual, Councilmember Kostaskey himself. Secondly, the one in the temporary unanimously staff department at the conclusion of the open session, during the closed meeting, the town council authorized Mayor Keller to execute a new employment agreement with the town manager, the town, the closed meeting began at 10:45 PM. That purpose, the statement given already, would expect the closed meetings of Monday, June 10. We will move now to the agenda for this meeting. The mayor would like to add to your business, add to the previously circulated agenda under the category of rebuilding the discussion of everything. Potential word municipal letter to legislators regarding amendments to be narrowed down to Section 20-509. Without objection, not be added to the agenda of any other committees or additions to the agenda. During the hour, I'll ask for motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So. You would have been given the decision in the a beautiful, hopeless, streamlined, and shortening meetings, known as the consent agenda. This is a single item, single vote, intended to streamline a meeting with this sort by putting together items that should be of non-controversial nature, if there are such things, and relatively straightforward in terms of business of the council. To that end, the town council meeting minutes of the special town council of May 28th, the regular town council meeting of June 10th, and the closed meeting that I just alluded to of June 10th. Minutes have been circulated, as well as mayoral appointments to the historic preservation committee. That would be Perry Chapman to fill out the unexpired term of 90, and James Fleming to take the chair just vacated by Pam Park, his service on committee reclamation. Additional items on the consent agreement, the agenda include an increase in unauthorized values of the term feed stopper's contract for the renovation of the town offices, a change in the November 2024 council meeting date to November 12, and an appreciation to Ann Atlee on the occasion of the 100th birthday. In accordance with adoption of the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the entire agenda.
Motion to approve the entire agenda this week.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
You got this.
All in favor?
You signed it. Bye.
You.
Aye.
Thank you, any rights? So that permits us to move to the two presentations. And let's go to the following demonstration. We have been working with Claire McDonald as Town Parkervist for a number of years. She is moving on and now probably replacing it as well, but in recognition of Claire's service to the town, we would like to thank her more formally for her service. And in that respect, I recognize Paul Leonard Schott, who relies on the office committee, who will read the appreciation. So, uh, fellow person, well, let's give him appreciation and then move.
Okay, okay.
Well, yeah, thank.
So I'll just stand here so it's easier for everybody. Resolution 2024-2, thanking Town Parkervist Claire McDonald for her contributions to Garrett Park community. Whereas since May 2019, Claire McDonald has served as Garrett Park Town Parkervist. Whereas Claire McDonald will be concluding her service as Town Parkervist in the summer of 2024. And the town of Garrett Park wishes to acknowledge her many contributions to the town government and the Garrett Park community. And whereas during her more than five-year tenure, Claire McDonald provided informed observations upon Garrett Park's history, making it come alive and more accessible through her authorship of column for the Bugle and curating exhibits for the post office display case. And whereas Claire McDonald substantially improved the organization of the town archives and accepted new collections that helped document the town's more than 125-year history. As she also completed the transcription of a large backlog of world histories from longtime Garrett Park residents and developed an index of these interesting world histories to improve the access to information about important town milestones. And whereas Claire McDonald provided timely research and documentation in response to inquiries from the mayor, town council members, town staff committee members, Garrett Park residents, and others. And whereas her accomplishments included a review and reorganization of town records and the creation of protocols for Garrett Parks reporting to the state of Maryland for records management. And whereas Claire McDonald's contributions included collaborating with the members of the Archives Committee to organize a well-attended May 2023 event that featured decades of town documents and other artifacts in celebration of Garrett Park's causes. This was Danielle, again, sorry about that. Um, she also, whereas she also assisted the members of the Archives and Historic Preservation Committees who held a successful house tour in April of 2024 that celebrated the 100th anniversary of Garrett Park's iconic Chevy houses, using her skills as a GL just to identify descendants of the original builders of these homes and to share important and to share the important role that before by others played in the development of Garrett Park. And whereas Claire McDonald has been both a colleague and a friend who will be missed by the town council, the employees of Town Garrett Park, and town residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council of the town of Garrett Park, in conjunction with Mayor Keller, hereby extends its sincere appreciation to Claire McDonald for her service as Town Archivist and for many contributions and dedicated commitment to preserving the history of town of Garrett Park.
And to the record, that's just the documentation by application.
That's great. And I'd also like to say she's been great to work with and very important at getting things out and done. It's amazing. So we're going to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while whereas we've got this word motion, don't we?
Can we have a motion? So, um, I see that we're going to join on our reserve pot by Claire's success. So I'm just, if you like, just do it yourself and say, um,
Good evening. Um, I am honored to take the role that Claire has shaped. And she's, it's a fabulous person and has been a wonderful archivist. And she's left various pebbles along the route for me to step onto, to help bridge this transition. So I'm looking forward to continuing her standards and her excellence.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome forward.
Thank you.
Um, so we will move to the presentations by the rest. If anyone who wishes to make this presentation, see them during this session. And we hear any input and feedback. Morning, Tony?
Yes, hi, Tony Allstar. Live at 11100 Kennelworth Avenue here in Garrett Park. And instead of being at home helping work on some cures for serious medical diseases or being with my family, I find myself now needing to come to this town council meeting. Um, begrudgingly so. Uh, I learned, and maybe you can tell me whether this is true or not, at the very last June town council meeting, I think was it true that the town council approved the rebuilding of the Kennelworth Arroyo intersection? That's true?
It is.
Well, it was just a very previous meeting that all of us who were involved, John Keen, who I see is online, and Todd and Ed Shaiaker, always are strong, just pleasure with the idea, thought it was not a very good idea. And then the very next meeting, I guess you guys, well, that meeting made it sound like you were going to say, well, we're going to put this on hold, it's off the construction list. And that's kind of where we thought it was going to stay. And then the very next meeting, I guess you voted it back in. So my questions are why? Uh, but my other question is, and I'd like to ask each of the town council members, have you physically gone to the spot where this intersection is and observed the line that is demarcated? Um, Phil, have you seen that?
I don't know. We have even seen it, but I voted no for the vote.
Well, we're not going, we're not.
Well, I'm curious, now very important to know whether people have actually gone to the site.
They have some of them.
All of you?
Forty-nine.
Not everybody.
And some of you.
I've been there, yeah, many times.
Yes, well, then my next question is, when you look at that design, why don't you ever approve it? But do any of you know the precedent for any kind of intersection that's been designed that way? I certainly have not seen it, not in the residential area. And, um, you know, Carolyn sent me an email today saying, you know, 55 years that she's lived here, she's never seen an accident, there's never been an incident, and I can concur, the 27 years I've been there.
Your presentation you've made on these three occasions, not the experience.
No, I know, I've only made one presentation on the topic and, and, you know, I feel, we all feel like we've been blindsided a bit, thought this had been taken off the list. And I think it's a terrible idea. And we mentioned about five or 10 different reasons why we thought it was questionable or a poor idea.
I understand.
And I don't understand the rationale for doing it. I think it's going to increase traffic congestion. I think it's going to make drivers much more closer together as they're coring up argyle. It has the problem of forcing a yield or even worse, a stop. And then in the winter, I pointed out the problem how large trucks that stop will now almost surely slide back down the street if it's icy. And other reasons, stormwater runoff, the inconvenience to Ed Shaiker, he didn't want it because of the inconvenience, the way it reconfigures his driveway, you know, the list goes on. So, you know, if you're not going to listen to the members of who are most impacted, which I thought was the theme of what happened at that meeting, and I thought actually walked away feeling pretty good, that you guys were just saying you would consider strongly the local people are most closely associated with the problem. But now I sense that's not happened. So I'm feeling like we've been sort of blindsided and it's a bad decision. I think it's going to backfire, it's not going to do what you think it's going to do. And the bottom line is that drivers, oh, and the vegetation has been cut away. I think it's much more visible now, probably could be a little better. Uh, but that was everyone's major complaint, which you couldn't see because of the plants. And finally, if a driver really wanted to, they could just swing a little more towards the center and do exactly what your design is in trying to do. They could improve their sideline, but nobody really seems to need to do that. So I think it's a bad idea. I'm disappointed that it's going ahead and I'm disappointed in the way that it has gone.
Thank you. Any other presentations by residents this evening?
So can we speak when the possible representation comes? Or should we do that now?
Um, no, we'll take that in order.
Okay, nice.
I did not.
Any further presentations from residents? There are more than two republicarians on the demolition application for 4517 Claremont Place. I'm not on either. Town manager, the next presentation.
Thank you. On June 12th, the town received an application for a demolition permit for 4517 Claremont Place. A copy of that application is included in the agenda packet. In accordance with Section 401C of the town code, a copy of which is also in your agenda packet, a public hearing is required for a demolition permit application before a permit can be issued. The town council, with the advice of the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee, must approve all demolition permits for a house or accessory building in excess of 400 square feet. Town demolition permits are valid for the same period of time as the associated required Montgomery County permit. Um, including in your agenda packet is the statement provided by the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee regarding the demolition permit request for 4517 Claremont Place. And I also want to note that the applicant is in attendance this evening if there's any questions that the mayor and council have for him.
Um, this is public hearing portion of this application. Is there anyone who wishes to address the application for the demolition permit? They're allowed to get the matter on tape for discussion. But also, I will entertain a motion to grant the demolition permit for 4517 Claremont Place. Do I hear such a motion?
This is just to discuss it.
On paper for the stuff.
Sure.
Uh, Councilmember, I said, thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Answer no, yes, thank you. Um, is there a discussion of the application for similar permit? Including, uh, any questions you might ask to the applicant? We understand this process this evening.
And the Historic Preservation Committee recommends against demolishing at least the front facade. And so I guess the question is whether the front facade can be retained.
Is there a question for me?
Yes, would you care to come up and identify yourself and do it? State the decision you wish, you're up or down on this.
Hi, I'm launched. Um, we, we have tried to give structure, we've tried to maintain the barrel seat. So with the new house that's started, it is going to have the same barrel seat as it has the Chevy house. Doug Mater is our architect, he's actually a resident of Garrett Park as well. So we can probably explain better. But, uh, but it won't be able to, that won't be possible to be demolished to just keep that portion of it, you know? When the machine, when the excavator demolishes, they're going to be able to sort of differentiate and just keep that section, you know, but alongside the rest of the house.
I have another question.
Sure.
Did you consider other alternatives that might preserve more of the original structure, particularly the visual aspect of the original structure?
Well, again, when we were designing the new house, we tried to maintain sort of the, you know, the Chevy style look, kind of, we've done that work together to just maintain that barrel look in the front. But when we're building a new house, we can't really, you know, maintain the whole foundation because foundation wall has to be new, but it has to be warranted for 10 years. And if I only bring out 500 firework, so I cannot warrant a whole foundation that's already in place. I have to build a new foundation to be able to warrant that. So it's impossible to rebuild that section.
Could you have done a renovation topic that would give it the same, um, I think that you were looking for and interior spaces?
So the best way to answer is that, you know, even if I'm doing a renovation, it's still leaving the foundation for the new section. Then I have to marry the new foundation with the old foundation. And that doesn't work well together because I cannot guarantee a whole section of foundation that I'm building for. You know, I think, well, I don't know how long it's been there, I don't know how thick the footers are, I don't know how wide the footers are, I don't know if I'm going to rebar those years. There's nothing that I can guarantee that I don't do this with. But I'm required by a new level, we can't even part anything for 10 years. So there's no way that I can do that, you know? So that's why our business is, we build beautiful new ones, you know, so, but we can't marry old foundation to foundations. And also the other thing, it's a difference in, uh, in material relationships. Old foundation is cinder block, my business is wood. New foundation, we do four, you know, with rebar, you know, four number four rebar every, you know, three rows on the footers, 18 inches thick, uh, sorry, eight inches thick, 18 inches wide. So we have certain standard that gets proved by town. And I guess even the towns, uh, reviewers, and we build that, and then we guarantee that.
Did you look at, um, either reusing, offering the house to be moved and reused or deconstructing the house and, and selling the parts of the house?
Thank you, great question. But I, I can go ahead and pull the house to the profit account. If it needs to be moved, any part of it, that the town will let move, the front section, side section, the interior.
But my question is, did you offer it for sale to like the general public? If somebody wanted to take it and move it to a site, you didn't do that.
I, I, I thought by finding, I didn't even know that was.
An option.
Yeah, right. But, but, uh, it, when I found out about this town council meeting that, you know, the Chevy houses are specifically at our my responsibility to say that here is that I can donate the whole house to town.
Right.
And if somebody wants to pick it up, move it and put it somewhere else, I'm more than happy for that.
I thought the important was about there, there are actually companies that specialize in deconstruction for salvage. There's a five-year-old dimension one way in there. Uh, have you ever explored that?
I haven't owned this house, but I have other houses, uh, to deconstruct the house, uh, you know, where they give you like a tax rate, uh, something like that, but they charge 25,000 dollars upfront to deconstruct that house. So it's not, it's not cheap, you know, um, automatic.
And then you get a pretty big, I've done several deconstruction projects and you get a pretty substantial tax benefit at the other end, it kind of covers the cost.
Correct, but that's over several years. And there's no guarantee that you recover that much.
Depends on how much money you make, right?
You know, so there's a big if, so it wasn't worth the risk, you know? Yeah, so I definitely explored it, but it worked.
So you're going to just have it taken down and put in a landfill?
Uh, correct, yes. Well, again, like beginning again, if somebody
Somebody wants.
He wants the doors, somebody wants the windows, I would happily look at it, you know, I would open the house up to whoever wants to come in and take anything.
It would just be the first one, I think, that is, would be totally raised. Um, there's one that's next to me and I remember talking to the builder, um, it was a speculative builder like yourself, um, and trying to show him different ways he could do it differently. And there's a ton of Chevy houses around town that were done with renovations in the back, one story or two stories, some were almost like a bi-level, turned sideways. Um, and there's tons and tons of ways to do it. That house that it would be raised is actually one of the few that's left in its original shape. I think of the 39 or 38 that there were, probably 35 of them have been heavily altered with an addition on them. I think all of those have the original foundation on them, including next door to me. Uh, there was one that was renovated a couple of years ago that actually had a fire decades ago. That was, that kept the existing foundation. There's somebody in the crowd here who has a Chevy house that had a second story addition built on it and another addition on the side still has the original, um, uh, foundation. I didn't even realize it was a Chevy house until he told me the story. Um, so I, I think there's tons of ways to do it. So I just feel like it's, I mean, it's not a true decision, but I feel like there's, as an architect, there's tons of ways to renovate it. Like, I guess the story that I heard about the house next to me is that the, from that builder's perspective, uh, consumers, they look at the picture on the real estate listing, they see a little tiny house and we see the price tag, they don't want it, um, you know, it could be glorious inside and everything, and inside is totally modernized and huge. It could be 3,000 square feet, but they see something small. But if you showed them something that's big, almost kind of cartoonish as their real estate listing, that they, more consumers than not will go for that. And I guess that's, that's kind of the challenge, I think, we're up against with the, as a town with the Chevy houses, is this kind of, uh, what the mass market wants versus what Garrett Parkers tend to treasure, so.
Right, so to respond to the first part of what you said was, so I personally have renovated, renovated that house in the past. Personally had issues where the new part is where it is, but the old part cannot handle the weight on the second floor that we put on the house, you know, so then I had problems.
Differentials, sentiment, yeah.
Exactly. And, uh, you know, what you're requiring might be owners who have renovated their houses, I mean, if they can take that. But trust me, when I sell a new house, you have no idea how big it is. And with the warranty that we have to provide, ask for the Office of Consumer Protection. I have to get a license from the Office of Consumer Protection now. Uh, they have to, they basically interviewed me to make sure that I know our building. And I have to guarantee the foundation for 10 years. And, you know, when that was a problem, that was a huge problem. You know, so that's why I, from then, made a decision, a business decision, that I'm not going to do that because of the problems I had with that, with that issue. You know, it's just, it's, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
You know, from a business perspective, it's just impossible, or at least in my experience, to marry those foundations together and then put the amount of weight that we put on a second floor of the house, you know?
And did it on my house and I get a little, I did it on my house and I get a little bit too many to fudge on one spot. And I know one of the other houses that was re-done as a Chevy has had a lot of problems with leaks. Those are, those are our issues, but they're not, not foolproof.
Or you could be okay with that, I want it to be open, but if I'm selling that house to somebody else, then they're they're going to complain to the Office of Consumer Protection, they're going to and I just try to avoid that, you know? Definitely.
Yeah, I understand.
Because I didn't build that.
Yeah.
So I think I'd ask Barb to look at whether we had any sites where the house could be moved. Barb, did you find any place that we could have moved the Chevy house in a place that Garrett Park already owns?
You know, there there are lots that would have to be consolidated. Um, the town properties in both locations that you and I discussed are actually consisting of multiple lots. Um, the other thing I just wanted to, to note is that if the town were to move a house to its property, we are required to go through mandatory referral.
Do what?
We are required to go through the, um, Montgomery Planning mandatory referral process because it is altering the use of the property. Um, so there.
You start with a house and end with a house?
Um, the lots that were brought to my attention and that someone inquired about do not have houses currently. And so it would be considered an alteration of use.
Oh.
Um.
So that's a long time to process.
Um, once you file for mandatory referral, they are required to act within 60 days. There's obviously, um, a series of plans and documents that have to be submitted as part of that. I think the more challenging part is consolidating lots if they, if there's not already a buildable lot.
Right.
And that process is, you know, from your professional experience.
Right. Thank you.
I think that mandatory referral wouldn't be terribly difficult if there was a good case for it. And, uh, it was said in a, as a joke in this form by Sean Collin when we were talking about detached accessory dwelling units years ago, with the square footage of that Chevy house, it was like 750 square feet. He joked that he lives in an accessory dwelling because he has a nearly original, um, Chevy house. But someone in town that has a larger lot, maybe 15,000 square foot or more, might be able to take it on as an accessory dwelling.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's, um, the mandatory referral process is Correct. Yeah, it's, it's, um, the mandatory referral process is, as you all were about to discuss shortly, um, governs governmental owned property in a change of use. Obviously, if there was a, um, you know, someone who had a buildable lot that was already vacant and it was appropriately zoned, then they don't have to go through mandatory referral because they're not a governmental entity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you're very anticipated timeline, uh, on the assumption that the now an assumption that the demolition is a big issue.
Um, so, uh, once the council moves, then I'll apply to the utilities, to cut utilities to the house, um, Washington Gas, um, Petro, WSC. So they take about two months to, uh, cut all that. And to cover the temporary hole, temporary service. It takes about two to three months to throw all that out. And then I also have to, uh, I, I have to submit permits, uh, uh, for settlement control for building. So it takes about two months for that, for that process. So we have time. You know, and if I need to extend that, you know, so, uh, to give you guys the opportunity to move house if you want to, I'd like to, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else in the council?
Well, I, I was curious if anyone within this sort of innovation, anyone would want to say anything?
Um, the vice chair, the part of the committee has been circulated. Do you want to make a presentation on the acting committee?
Um, just wanted to, uh, go over.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, Senator Jeff, Vice Chair of Committee, Nancy Walz, they're here, so I'm a member step. Uh, just want to clarify, our committee recommendation was to ask the advocate to defer demolition and a reconsideration, preserving the base of the front elevation. Been done there. Um, we, uh, also asked whether the council might consider buying financial incentives that would list to do that, to try to preserve the fundamental building. I haven't heard that discussed today. So that's what I'm going to try. Have you considered that? I'm not. I think that is, you know, spending sort of amount, the second, that is the second part of the committee's recommendation.
That might be a longer term undertaking.
Yeah.
Mayor Keller, if I may, I was just pulling up the, the building information. So there were two areas of townhome property that I, um, was asked about. One is the, um, area near Penn Place. So those lots, there's five of them, have an aggregate area of eleven thousand four hundred eighty-seven square feet. Um, minimum lot size in Garrett Park is nine thousand square feet. So if those lots were combined, they would form, um, a buildable lot. They would just have to go through the, we would have to go through the process to flatten and mandatory referral.
But there's a lot of trees on them. There are.
There's competing interests, sure. Um, the other property I was asked about were lots, um, on Cambria. Um, one of which is, so there's obviously the one property which is currently used by the pool. The other, which is currently used as a dog park. Um, each of those parcels are large enough, um, by themselves to be R ninety lots. There is a right of way next to the dog park lot, which is six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, which the town could abandon and combine with the dog park lot. Obviously, there are competing interests here in terms of what you all may wish to do in terms of preserving a Chevy house and other uses for that prop, those properties. Um, but it is feasible.
I just wanted to comment with Brian's comment that given his response that we, not, um, the owner of the property. Um, it didn't sound like a financial incentive would overcome his objection to the technical issues of the foundation growth. So it seemed to me we're pursuing, otherwise I did appreciate the committee making that reference.
And then also have the new house goes with the conditions. Figure out the area.
Probably cost a couple of hundred thousand to move it, so.
But it would also have to be renovated. I mean, you can't just move it.
I just wanted also to, to bring to the record what the committee said, which I think we all, um, emphasized was the sentiment that this is really a tragic loss for the town. Feel like I'm in the time that it's really, really dissapointing that we keep facing these kinds of situations. So I mean, I urge all of us to think about whether we could do things we could do to, to do for potential for the state, yeah, in the future.
Um.
Yeah. What do you want? Yours?
Yeah, I heard that one on the, one one three one four one three. This is a blue sky idea I just said. I'm sure it's probably not even relevant to the council, but it does concern the house. I happen to know that Charlie Andrews and Ellen Quigley are in the midst of a one to two year process of trying to divide their lot, build a house with children on that other lot. And working with the county, no wonder how interested the county might be push that process forward very quickly. And then possibly Charlie and Ellen might be interested in moving that house over to their lot for their children. So just no idea of trouble.
Um, it's an attorney involved. Town has, no, if you're sticking on the, the flat and, uh, space, but it could be used to. Um.
I think I can talk to Charlie and tell him if there's any interest at all.
Mm-hmm. You know, if it does match up and we could try to pressure the county as much as possible to move that along. A lot of times the budget's just so, they just don't put the tension on it until somebody prods them. So. So my permit got through the builder, I had to go have lunch with the permit chief and then the permit was finally issued. So.
To that, I need to ask, um, is it possible if we were to put a, the ship on it, but put a toll on this effective day pending that exploration?
We, we got two or three months before he's gonna actually demolish the house. There's a lot of things the builder has to do before he can demolish.
Absolutely.
Could we put a request for the two months and maybe pass that at least the first two months to have that time?
Or something, yeah, if we could get either send that letter to Raj or vice versa, they'll say, you know, let's.
I, I will, no problem.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I mean, I want to demolish it unless you guys say, you, you, you've explored all the options. I won't do anything until three months anyways. In most probably it'll be six. We have other projects that are going on, so we probably won't get to this one until around six months. But I, I, I just know that I need this to start the process. So I don't think you have anything to worry about.
Appreciate you doing this early because you could wait five months to do it and then that would be no time. So, yeah. So, thank you. Thank you.
Well, Matt, you have, um, let me ask, the removal of the large sugar maple, the right as you finish the tree.
Yeah.
Where the new nine will go. Uh, that would take place irrespective of any.
Yes, correct. Right, right. So we have. Even for the new foundation, we leave, we leave, uh, take that right off. But the county is gonna make us put the lime factories in place for it. So we will replenish. Yep. I, I live in the county too. You know, so I live here, I work there, my kids work school here. So, you know, we are very conscious builders, you know, so we don't, we, any tree that we take down, we plant. So, and we pay the county fee for that, which are many thousands for planting, but we do it too.
Anything further with the council? Um, the requisite, the demolition permits having been met, the council really has no discretion in this matter. I've offered a vote on approval of demolition permit, probably about seventeen. Our house, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Um.
In six months.
These are. But it's approved. Is it another button?
No. I guess there's nothing else we can do to try and formally request that postponement. I mean, just.
Gerald Lee and Mike Brodley request would be to report back to us after talking. I had the same thought with Ellen Wiggly, but I think they're gonna build a pretty big house for their son with his kid. So why don't you just let us know what they say once you hear back? That would be great.
Thank you.
So we're in the lot?
Yeah.
Jan, not before January twenty-fourth. You have our word.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next time, agenda items contact, we'll work with the park designers and start in specific things for the Yandell Park Creation Project. Um, or I'll just design to begin.
Sure. And, um, late April, town staff issued RFP twenty twenty-four dash three, which is for park design services and preparation of construction specifications for Yandell Park Creation Project. Uh, this is the formal project name used in our state funding applications. Um, along the consultant's scope of work, um, an excerpt of the RFP is in your agenda packet, so it provides more detail. Um, but is assisting us, is assisting us with, um, the community engagement process. Um, helping the staff get through, um, the Montgomery County Planning Department Mandatory Referral Process. Um, and the associated plans and drawings that are a required part of that process. Um, and also the preparation of construction documents and submission of the same to all appropriate county agencies for approval and finalizing the construction bid package, assisting town staff with reviewing bids and recommending award of the construction contract. Uh, the RFP was advertised on E Maryland Marketplace Advantage, which is the state procurement site. We received five proposals by the submission deadline of these proposals forwarding to be responsive and complete. A copy of the bid tabulation is provided in your agenda packet as attachment two. Um, as Kayla and I were screening the four responsive proposals, the things that we considered were experience with the mandatory referral process, knowledge of and experience with other Montgomery County regulatory and permitting processes. Um, knowledge of the requirements of the American Disabilities Act, because this project is subject to. Uh, we felt it was important to have, um, a project team that included both a landscape architect and a civil engineer. Um, because there are aspects of the mandatory referral process that are more engineering related and pricing. Um, based on this criteria, we narrowed the four responsive proposals to two for further consideration. Those two firms were KCI Technologies Inc. and Norton Land Design LLC. Um, we were impressed with both their technical confidence and their competitive pricing, but also that both firms clearly understood the uniqueness of the park location with its proximity to residential properties. Um, our assistant town manager, K O Bucher, Bucher checked multiple references for both firms. Um, and those results of those reference checks were shared previously with the mayor and town council. Um, and as you know, they were very positive for both firms. There is a pricing difference between the two proposals. KCI Technologies uh, price is what fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars compared, compared to Norton Land Design's price quotation of forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Um, as noted in the staff memo in the agenda packet, um, both were within the range of what was anticipated when we submitted our state, uh, funding application. And the state basically does not hold us to specific categories, only the overall project budget. Um, and as many of you probably recall, the cost of demolishing the single family home on the property was considerably less than we had anticipated. Uh, staff is recommending that the town council award a contract to KCI Technologies in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred. Um, I think some of the considerations from our perspective that, uh, tipped the scale in favor of KCI over Norton Land Design was their extensive list of municipal clients. Um, all of whom spoke very favorably about the firm's quality of work, their timeliness, their responsiveness and their public engagement skills. Um, I did want to note that one of their municipal references was with the town of Rising Sun, which is a small community of, um, under thirty-five hundred residents. And one of their comments was that KCI Technologies was very sensitive to the needs of smaller communities in addition to their technical competency. Uh, we also were impressed that KCI Technologies' project team included a subconsultant to assist with cost estimation, which we felt would be important, given the modest project budget. And we also felt that there was some benefit to the larger size of KCI, basically their commitment to staff cross-training and internal quality control. They actually have a formal process for that. Um, so with that, uh, we would be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
You want to start, question, or if you can, uh, have a motion?
I think the POSCO wants to make some, POSCO members want to make a comment about this awarding this. Is that right? Jack and?
Yes.
Yes.
What do you want to?
I think that's your turn.
She's getting a seat. The member, should we do it?
Sure.
Hey, hi, I'm Jean Haran. I'm at forty-four nineteen Cambrian Avenue, and I am a member of POSCO Parks and Open Space Committee.
And Jack Yandel, the chair of POSCO. So please.
Um, Laura, thank you. We came to forgetting the ball when people think it was RFPs. We were, uh, as a committee, extremely impressed with a number of bids and, uh, you know, really thought the RFP was, was well considered. POSCO looked at, um, really both of these companies, KCI and Norton. And what sold me was the idea of a smaller company that could be more of a partner with a small municipality. I, um, I think that getting to know the principal, having him intimately involved in the concept makes me feel better that we can create something that Mrs. Yandel would be happy with and that really works with the concept of preserving for nature with making people happy comes second. Um, I also was impressed with Rock Norton Park over in Ken Gar. I thought that, um, Norton did a really nice job with taking, you know, a residential space with homes on either side and creating something that would be quiet and reflective. Um, also, I, I understand the idea of a bigger company. And I understand that both companies have great recommendations. You, you never know who you're gonna get when you're working with a large company. And one project team may be aces, the other project team may not be what we had expected. And, you know, things can go right, things can go wrong from both sides. But I liked Norton because I felt that we had a direct pipeline to, to one of the principals. Thank you.
Um, so we had, um, I think five members at the meeting, um, where we discussed all the proposals. We actually went through, uh, several of us read all the proposals. We, we're not making this um, in any kind of like jumping the gun fashion. We also, several of us went out to get to Rock Morton Park in Ken Gar to look at the work there, which was done by Norton Land Design. I actually learned a lot. I learned a lot from having to go with Fred Moser, my next door neighbor, who, um, is also on the care park conservation trust that kind of has oversight over the wishes of Letitia. And she taught me a lot on that trip. She taught me a lot about what, what we're doing with POSCO regarding Yandell Park and anything else associated with Letitia. Letitia had a vision of what she wants. What you want. And she doesn't, you know, besides just not having a lot of structure, she wants landscape. It's all about the plants for Letitia. And so the reason that we like Norton Land, uh, Martin, Norton, call him just Norton, because I like to say Norton. The reason we like Norton is that, um, they bring landscape architecture focus to this. The other company, KCI, is, um, it brings a professional engineering approach to this. POSCO's vision is, uh, is to, is to have properties in town reflect the needs of the people and the people who are behind that with Letitia. And that's why we think it's important to honor Letitia's plan and bring in a landscape architecture firm who can also drive the process through mandatory referral. So we, uh, I appreciate very much the work that Kayla and Barbara did. Uh, but we just have a different opinion. Uh, also, I just want to point out one thing going forward with, because POSCO is out, you know, it didn't exist, I think, when this, um, RFP went out, but it does exist now. And what we hope is that POSCO can be an intermediary trust agent with the town, um, dealing with the public so that, uh, dealing with the public and the contractor. Um, dealing with the public so that, uh, dealing with the public and the contractor in some way, you know, whatever way is legally uh, doable, so that we have um, we can represent the interest of the community without having to go to the council regarding issues associated with parks. So another RFP that's coming out. Um, if it's going to be about Yandel Park, uh, we would hope that written in there is something about uh, the role of POSCO as an intermediary. If that's inappropriate, you won't do it, but we think it's a reasonable approach to take rather than just having the town, the town staff, and nothing against town staff, they don't live here. Um, uh, and we live here. And so I think it's important to have people who live here as part of the process. So Norton Land, uh, Norton, Norton is uh, certainly um, our favorite, and we saved a few thousand dollars in the process. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, strictly speaking, we need a, a motion to change this up for further discussion, but do we want to just add further discussion to the table? I have to, or anyone on the topic?
Does the motion have to be for approving or disapproving the contractor or more of towards moving to a selection? So can there be discussion about? If you make a motion, or did, did you have to vote yes or no on the contractor first?
So far, I have.
I'm wanting, I'm asking, I'm wondering if it should be two steps or one step. Um, I just don't know the proper process.
If we like, we'll find where we go through the board, contact someone. Uh, we don't really get into September.
It, I would like to agree with, with the mayor's view of usually trying to have a motion on the, on the, on, under discussion so that we formally track the discussion.
Well, I'd say that, I mean, let's, let's address the, uh, if you will, um, some people who are in favor. Some people who are not in favor. And I think that it would be best maybe if we held a discussion, then we would come up at the end of said discussion, so may make a motion to approve one place or the other. And we got a further discussion, or we could, uh, just move on, but I'm just thinking, we, let's get it down to a motion, ring waffling around and reading amendments and stuff like that, if that makes sense to everybody.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to consider the Norton contract as opposed to the other. So if we can put that on the table.
That, that is basically the dead on the table, is we have a second one.
Oh, second one.
The two motions to you. That council would go through the board and contract to Norton Land Design. Is that correct? Our second is. But, more than second, with the laws amended. Uh, I think that gets one taken before the discussion.
So it, it, just I wonder if we could get a summary of the two, the arguments. I mean, it sounds like Norton has the advantage of being more about uh, the landscape itself and the thought being that that is the wisdom of the donor and that also there's good examples of work, uh, and that they meant the principle of the smaller company. The, the sort of points in favor of um, KCI are that it is very professional as an engineering firm and that it has good, a good reputation for planning a lot of a lot of good facilities around the county. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think both firms are, are qualified. Um, KCI's project team does include a landscape architect. It includes an environmental scientist. Um, and certainly as a bigger firm, they have a number of engineers. Um. I think, you know, I think either firm could do a good job for us. I think when Kayla and I thought about it, and one of the questions we raised in a follow-up discussion with Norton was there, it's a three-person firm, one of those, I believe, had just been hired. Um, it was three going to four, I'm sorry. Um. You know, we did ask, because our engineer was fairly, not new, but newer, two years, um, I think with the firm, and what would their approach be if that person were to leave? Um, I don't think this is, you know, I was optimistic, I think, in the budget that some of this might get done all within fiscal year twenty five. If that does not happen, obviously, you know, there's advantages to having a small firm or a small staff. We're like that ourselves. Um, obviously, Mr. Norton's not leaving because it's his company. Um. If, if there were to be a departure, there's really possibly a gap in terms of backfilling that. Um, but I think in terms of having the core components and from my perspective of having a civil engineer to help deal with some of the things in mandatory referral, dealing with stormwater, as well as having a landscape architect and that sensitivity to Mrs. Yandel's vision. I think both firms have that. I think some of it was just in a larger firm and having an actual professional cost estimator and having that depth in case there is any turnover was what sort of tipped the scales. Clearly, there is a financial difference between the two firms.
To. Uh, Bob, did you ask both firms or either firm, um, their experience or their approach to stormwater management on the site?
Both of them sort of addressed that. I think both firms with their experience going through both the county regulatory process as well as mandatory referral. Um, both brought up, you know, trying to avoid triggering certain requirements that become very expensive going through the county, as you're well aware. Um. So I, I think both of their goals are to try to come up with concept designs for the community to look at. Um, that would basically not trigger certain requirements at the county that can become very expensive.
At some expertise and some level of understanding around the effect of stormwater management on the site.
Correct. And also the impact when you start having too much um, disturbance of the site and what that triggers. Um. You know, I think since we're talking a lot about plans and things, one of the things when we had our kind of follow-up with um, KCI is their landscape architect who has considerable experience was on the call. Um, they're certainly not pushing, you know, any ideas, but some of the things that they brought up were doing like demonstration projects, educational projects, and just kind of throwing out things that were kind of going through their mind. So I think they also had a sensitivity to, um, you know, what would be appropriate for that site, given its location. I think both firms had that.
Thank you.
Ju- just one more clarification. Maybe I missed it, but I didn't see the budget amounts for both of the companies in the.
Yeah, it, it is. Um, it was.
On the second, it's on the other.
Yeah, so KCI, yeah, KCI is fifty seven, three. Norton Land Design is forty four, eight. Um, I did want to note that, um, because this was not part of the RFP, we did get pricing from both firms, um. In light of Mayor Keller's expressed desire for the consultant at the very beginning of the project to meet with, have one meeting with the members of the Garrett Park Conservation Trust and POSCO. Um, so that would be an additional meeting, not contemplated, but we did get pricing from both firms for that.
And, sorry, Jean.
Uh, Barb and Kayla, um, I, I know it's in our agenda packet, um, I just thought that we aired it. It sounded like you did check references on those companies.
We did.
Did you get any negative feedback for either company?
I did not get any negative feedback. Um, I checked three references for both Norton and three references for KCI. Prioritizing, speaking with people who had recent projects that were most comparable to Garrett Park's project overwhelmingly for both firms. It was positive experiences. It was reassurance of their technical capabilities. It was reassurance of their ability to engage with members of the public, hear what those concepts might evoke from the public while still maintaining the technical and legal needs of the property. It's probably the most glowing set of reference checks I've ever done. So I am not concerned that we would be left adrift. I'm not concerned that we'd be left with an unfortunate situation. Both of these firms are professional, qualified, and they are prepared to help Garrett Park develop a beautiful new park that honors a long-term resident.
Can I ask you, I'm, I'm, are you saying you got glowing references for both firms or?
So I spoke to KCI, three references for Norton. Um, I did about two weeks ago, share details of those reference checks with council, breaking down who I spoke to. Any particular comments they offered consistently glowing, consistently positive, consistently. I think when I mentioned the firm's name, it was, oh yeah, those guys, they're, we love them. Several communities, um, I'm thinking of Laurel, I'm thinking of Rise and Sun have ongoing contracts because they, these firms are so responsible for their needs. So to address that original question, no back references, no dropped balls on the projects, just consistent, good quality work from both firms.
Thank you.
I will say, and I'm putting my wife on the spot here. Um, she has a friend who is reading these references, and I think that the friend would give unbiased opinion only because she doesn't have a horse in this race and um, I, and knows us. And um, to my knowledge, she led great reviews for Norton.
She thinks so.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
And so the, the time component, that is, if there were a discontinuity of service of some sort, I mean, this whole project planning phase would be over within six months, right? No, no.
No, probably not. Um, I mean, I think, you know, I think the community process, community engagement process needs to play out the way it needs to play out.
Right.
Uh, mandatory referral, um, and the way I structured the RFP is that there would be an informal consultation, um. You know, before we would actually move, because you can only, you, you take one single design through mandatory referral, um, and that will go to the planning board. Um. So we do have an informal consultation process. Um, you know, from a funding standpoint. Um, I, I did check with the state, just because that was one of the questions that came up, um, at the pre-bid meeting was, you know, how long do we have to get this done? Um, you know, from a state standpoint, as long as they're seeing progress, you basically have five years to spend the money. Um, obviously, that clock is, is ticking now. Um, I don't think it needs to, you know, you need to take five years. I think it can be done sooner than that, but I don't think we need to rush it either.
Right.
It, it's not relevant to the contract per se, but um, I do think that the council perhaps with expression to provide some direction that when this, at the different waypoints in the RFP, um, with the consultant is, um. Uh, for example, working with the town staff on surveys, content, anything like that, that we could direct, um, coordination with the committee. Um, because I think that would be beneficial. We didn't have the, maybe the timing of the RFP was written. Um, but I think it would be helpful if we encouraged that coordination, um, at every one of those ways. It says that, you know, not, not dragging it out, but making sure that we have that coordination.
But, kind of moderating for larger meetings for the town, or would that um, committee be trying to act on behalf of the town, like trying to represent the standard sixty dollar lessons?
Or surveys. I'm just suggesting that, for example, the committee could be helpful in structuring surveys and um, giving draft input before we get around to.
I suppose it could also be, if you get down to last minutes of this or that decision, then um, the committee could, could represent the town, townspeople in general to provide a last minute choice if it turns out that something needs to be done for some reason. So basically the same thing you've said, just. You know.
Some committee could, um, help publicize the poll in a way that would perhaps honor greater participation and, and more informed responses. If they would be able to.
And we would do that for you, Jack.
Big, big surveys, yeah.
One other important piece that we can work on together, yeah.
Which is to make sure people that know can hear you.
Yeah. One other important piece that, uh, the office and the committee can work on together is really educating the residents on what the terms of this conservation easement are. I mean, it is, it's easy to go, gosh, you didn't know that, but we've been reading these documents. There are a lot of people in town with no idea that there are any restrictions. And so I think we could work very harmoniously uh, in making sure that everybody feels and understands what's going on, so we don't get to this where somebody walks in and says, you know, what did you do? And we've already engaged the people who live around Yandel's home, and then we just would keep extending that to full town. Thanks.
And, and maybe we could have a bronze Chevy house Archie.
There you go. You choke, but that was one of the ideas I've had for a long time for that place is a lot of, um, a lot of those kind of parks, we've worked on them in the past, you have something that's kind of evocative of what was there before. Like if you go to the Jamestown Settlement in Virginia, they don't have the original foundation anymore, but they have bricks that kind of line up. So I, I was always fascinated by that as a kid. I was always fascinated by like the, um, like the steel frame that echoes where Ben Franklin's house and the original, I think it was his printing shop where in Philadelphia where I was born and grew up. Like those kind of things I've always thought would be kind of helpful. And I, it, I'm kind of piggybacking on that point. I would be, I would not be in favor of kind of this, the POSCO group and staff handling that. I would like to be involved. I think council should be involved. I could have twelve, thirteen, fourteen issues of park planning and design. And I knew, I knew when POSCO was originally formed, I wasn't even be included and I I've offered my services on that and a lot of other things. I, I'd be willing to join the group if, if it could be kind of expanded a little bit to have more points of view.
Right. And just so you know that someone else in town is tracking with you. Uh, our neighbor Dave Alme, when he first looked at the space, said the same thing. He can create something that provides a view of what the outline is. He would do, you know, he had offered to do one of those information boards so that you would understand what was there. There are some little quirks about the house that Dave knew about, and uh, that's why we'd want to get everybody in town together to, to give them the opportunity to provide info. And certainly for you, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy to join. I've done parks projects that have had these kind of things, like the bow notch and where the Titanic was going to come in. So those kind of things, it's pretty subtle references, yeah.
To invite you to our meetings to participate to your heart's content.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and um, we, we are at this point running our meetings very, as casually as possible with everybody. You know, we have a court of people who are assigned the job, eventually voting on, but everybody's in, but more than welcome, please.
Okay. Yeah, I think I'll take you all up on that. Like I have a little bit, you know, I have a little bit more capacity now.
In fact, I'm hoping that our next meeting, that we can get a representative from the Conservation Land Trust, whether Fred, someone else to come and talk to us. They haven't done that yet, and to express the how they see the vision of Letitia and how that means, and how that informs decisions that I think we have to make.
It was a couple of years ago, Ken Ingram came and talked about, he read through literally the whole document. Um, I get shocked, one, one person in the meeting.
Well, I think it's. Originally said, let's, let's get the building down. Let's tear out in the basins. Let's get kind of a blank slate. And, and at that point, people started, are looking at it, I think, a little bit differently now than they were before. And so this is a great time to just
Mm-hmm.
to, it's a fermentation.
So perhaps an onsite meeting would sound. I say, um, up in the streets, trying to respond to, to what I'm told to do a lot of your questions, like the RFP specifically called for, um, building cover in six, in six phases, and each of the response broke down on that basis. Uh, we have here to pack in.
Right.
And, uh, meeting path is, um, I couldn't bring the Norton Land Design, uh, he just explained the, the, this encounter is portionally present. And the part of the time, we can feature the, the, also gave the estimated time. The leisurely phases, that accumulate the, 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 the.
The, the total time was what?
Three quarters.
Okay.
Forty two minutes, something. Um. What I have to think, one part of the staff, is that any way
To hold the seat.
Need those two companies in, in the context of their experience, specifically in Montgomery County mandatory recovery programs. Um, and and the number of relations to the others.
I I think both firms are equally qualified. Um, that was, I I think one of the major things we were looking for in terms of assistance was actually having someone who was familiar with the process, familiar with the drawings um and the other requirements. And I think both firms are equal in that regard.
It was a bit of a, some of the rock, um, part of being the real analysis of the review. Uh, part of considering, you know, those, some almost on both sides.
Yeah.
At that dynamic in the internal process.
Yeah, very much so. I mean, I think when Kayla and I went out to the park, um, and this was something that, you know, was sort of noted in the RFP and discussed at the free bid meeting. Um, obviously, we have playgrounds um in very close proximity. I mean, I think, I think a traditional playground as I told the firms, um, is probably not what I would have envisioned the community necessarily looking for, but you do have sort of non-traditional sort of play structures that are you know, nature themed or something. So you could have an element of that. Um, you know, certainly not at all trying to cut off what the options are that the community would like to consider. But I do know both firms in our discussions with them were um very familiar with, very cognizant of things that would tip us over into other regulatory processes. So example, if there's different ways you can have, you know, structure, um, obviously, if you start getting into having something that's more complicated, then it's triggering, you know, a structural building protect and things like that. Um, and all those things obviously are costly when you start getting into some of those processes.
And just for clarification, I would think that the eventual, what Letitia, what Yen Dap Park would look like, well, having common with Needeth Rock Garden Park and their houses from both sides, but
Yes.
very, very little else.
Yeah.
Because we're not putting down cement floors, we're not putting up concrete, not putting up, that's not the intent of Letitia. That's what the Conservation Trust will hold, hold the town to the it's, you know, I think our original, I don't know if it was myself or Jean or somebody said, we want a kind of meditative space. You know, a low impact meditative space, and I see no reason that we're going to change our mind. Hopefully, the town will agree. Hopefully, the landscape architect will come up with some design in that direction. Um, but it's not going to look like something we built up.
Yeah, I mean, I think the initial thought with having kind of a broad-based, you know, community survey is to allow all the residents to get ideas on the table and then sort of step back from that and figure out what, what works, both from a regulatory process and a budget standpoint and an acceptability standpoint, recognizing there's people who basically live right on top of the property. Um, so I think we, you know, we've all kicked around some, some thoughts. I certainly have, Kayla and I chatting. Um, but you know, I think part of what's important in this process is not to be cutting off the opportunity for residents to to weigh in and actually get all these ideas on the table from the very beginning and then willow it down from there.
Um, any further discussion or point of view from the council?
Um, just, just a comment, I guess, just echoing like Jack said about South Martin Park, that's a little bit different. It's a smaller lot and it's, it's mostly paves. It's not really totally, I guess, but it is kind of analogous a little bit as it's kind of meant to be a, a little bit of a meditative, um, and that, I didn't mean that word, I meant to be more of a meeting space within that area, like more of a gathering spot. Um, I personally, I'm not keen on the idea of a meditative space. We've had two large pieces of woods in the town. I think Kimber Woods is twice as large as that lot and Lockman Woods is like five or six times that. And I've not heard any kind of in 15 years I've been here, any kind of aching for a meditative spot. I've never seen anybody meditate in either of those spots. So I, I just, and I'll probably touch on it later. I'm just, I don't want the town to be um putting in a, a pretty significant um chunk of investment for a place that has very little utility for the 360 some households around town. So I think we got to be kind of say that. And then towards that effect, I really feel like a survey should be, we've had a little bit of trouble, I think, with various surveys that have been done. I think that survey has got to really be approved by the council. It shouldn't be something that just goes between staff and residents or POSCO and staff and residents or POSCO and residents. I think it's got to be, make sure that it's broad and not um kind of leading towards a
Correct.
certain solution or leading against other solutions. So.
Comment would be that it has to conform to the restrictions on the way that the land was given to us and there are certain construction requirements or things that aren't going to be approved, you know, that we can't do. So I think the questionnaires and that engagement with the town about what they want have to include what our parameters are.
Well, I think, if I may kind of tag on to what Lisa said, I know that there, I, my sense is that there may have been some concern about some initial scoping in terms of what is included in the initial survey. And I, I think Lisa in talking this through, I, I sent an email to you all earlier today that many of you probably haven't seen, but when I was working on the RFP, um, I reached out to the deputy director at Montgomery Parks and they've always been very helpful. And he connected me with someone to kind of help me kind of walk through it. Their first comment was, oh, you have to go through mandatory referral. We're so sorry, um, which they have to go through it themselves. Um, but one of their comments was that, that there maybe should be some initial scoping to address exactly the issues that Lisa has brought up in terms of um, what is feasible with the budget. And I know from, it may seem like $300,000 is a significant sum of money, but every consultant, um, the people at Montgomery Parks, everyone was like, wow, this is a really small budget. Um, so I think it's a balancing act between not trying to cut off any type of community input, but also not wanting people to get all, all excited about something that we can't afford, because several, understandably so, um, have made it clear in the past that you want to stay within funding that, that the town had allocated, which was $100,000, and then leveraging the $250,000 from the state. So I do think there is a balancing act between not trying to cut off input, but also recognizing that there are some constraints, both from, you know, the data conservation easement and just finances candidly. Um, so I think that's just something we'll all have to kind of work through together.
And the, the survey could be a public education tool as well. And it discusses what can be done with the land.
Right.
And then offers choices within those parameters. It will, it will be a good survey.
I agree.
I want to have the survey in tandem with a meeting or a meeting instead would be better to get community input. It's like, I've seen it done a lot of different ways. Um, I, I just wonder if a meeting would be better, because I think there were two meetings included in the contract. Answering the RFP, one was at the end of design, which I'm not sure is really that great, because we won't be able to change much anyway. So I wonder if that should be moved and maybe like one of the meetings with the consultant could be um before they do the three designs to kind of hear, hear what would be the results of maybe an in-house public meeting here. You know, whether it's led by POSCO or council or just an open hearing or whatever, to kind of let, let people that are interested come out and learn more and say more, maybe that the results of that and, and or a survey could then be given to the consultant, then have that meeting. And after they um do that, they make the three concepts, maybe then get the second round of public input narrowed down to one, and then have them take that for a mandatory referral, which I think it would be will be very unlikely we'd get something that would be rejected on mandatory referral. A lot of times it's just the bureaucratic process going so that, I think so. I, I wonder if that would be the better utility of the spend on the two meetings, kind of um bookending the three concepts.
I, I think too, kind of once again, piggyback off Lisa's comment, I think the, and a lot of us was talking this through with an acting division chief at Montgomery Park. So I think the initial idea was to try to do some scoping based on the constraints, get people to react to that. Those would form the foundation for coming up with the three concept designs. Um, which is a very preliminary, get a read from um the mandatory referral staff. And then the idea to have the community meeting was that there would actually be something visual for people to look at. Um, and in all likelihood, there will be elements from each that people respond to favorably, respond to negatively. And then that input would help form what is the concept design that would have come to the town council before anything goes to mandatory referral. Um, so obviously, there can be some changes to that. If there are any changes, obviously, we have to go back to the firm for pricing, because they, we had to have something standardized for people to react to and to respond to. Um, but what went into how the community engagement process was laid out was a function of my discussions with the acting division head at Montgomery Parks and what they have seen be most effective and where they felt there were critical junctures that we would want to touch base with the community before we got too far down the road. Um, you know, meetings can certainly be added to the scope of work. Um, obviously, if this meeting caused a bit associated with that.
I wasn't trying to add one, just, I, I thought there were two. I was just talking about the timing of it.
Yeah, so I mean, if you're excluding the meeting, the informal consultation with mandatory, you know, with the mandatory referral staff, and then their attendance at the planning board meeting, um, because this was a bit of the planning board, um, there, there were two meetings that were priced. So one was the um a community meeting, which would also parallel with a survey in case someone can't attend that particular evening. And then the meeting at the town council. Um, at, at the mayor's request, we had gotten pricing from both firms um for another meeting um at the very beginning of the project, if that's something that was desired.
Does, does Norton have the ability to give us any kind of cost estimate for their design?
Um, what they indicated, because that was a discussion point we had, is um they mentioned maintaining kind of their own database of watching construction projects. Um, so they say they track that, and I have no reason to doubt that they do. Um, it's obviously more sort of an internal thing than, you know, someone who kind of does that for a living.
So we won't really know what the price is until we get the final design and put it out to bid, is what it sounded like.
Um, part of the RFP requirements uh is to give us to develop concept designs that would stay within the allowable funding that the town has. Whatever was presented at the community meeting was projected to be within budget. Obviously, you never know until you go out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
So it's really, really one of the meetings was more of a staff, staff to staff meeting, which I guess that makes sense.
So there were a total of um four meetings they were expected to be at. Um, two were Montgomery Planning related to mandatory referral. One was before the town council and one was the community meeting. So those were the four meetings um that they priced as part of their bid submission.
It's kind of ringing a bell. I think the last time I went through this, it was, did the same meetings. We had the meeting with county planning and then I had a meeting with, the client was Parks Preservation, Parks Preservation Group, so Preservation and Planning, whatever they call it.
Um, so we did get pricing, um, as I meant, the mayor's request, in case there was a, a meeting that was desired at the very beginning. Um, as he, as he described it, um, and obviously the consultants don't care who it's with, um, but one was kind of a a joint meeting of the Conservation Trust members and POSCO. KCI um had a price of $930. It was envisioned to be um at, at most a two-hour meeting. And then Norton um quoted $750. So if that's something that's of interest, whenever there's a motion, you might want to a, adjust, obviously adjust the funding to include that cost, if that's something that's desired. And I would say that's, that's, you know, that's the price for a two-hour meeting. It can be with whomever you'd like it to be.
I mean, we're just starting.
Tom and I kind of also had a lean towards um it have, having some interest in Norton as a smaller, more like a landscape forward firm. I feel like this is a very landscape forward project, not a engineering. If it was a, like a larger infrastructure project where you need to soften the edges, I feel like that's more of a KCI type firm, whereas this is really a landscape project with a little bit of technical, even a lot of the things you even would submit for a project like this, like technically a landscape architect can submit stamp and submit them. So I, I think worst case scenario might be that they, if they do run into a problem where they don't have the PE on the firm at that time, do we have a backup where they could have a consultant do it? Or would that be allowed for the contract?
Yeah, I mean, we, we specifically asked that question because they are so small and we have engineers. So if that engineer were to leave for some reason, how would they basically backfill that? Um, they indicated, yeah, that they would have to go outside. Um, you know, obviously, they're, they have to stick to the price that they sign a contract for, so whatever impact that would have financially, it would be on them, not on the town.
They'll just make the delivery bill.
Could I make an amendment to the motion to allow additional $1,000 um to cover um additional needs that we might be?
Any second, having that added as a friendly. Uh, so make them a floor is to award the contract to Norton Land Design with an added budgetary lot of $10,000 of a potentially wishing a new all in favor of that.
Um, should we also include in that authority for a change order to be approved by the mayor? An additional need is to be requested. It's not, it's the budget before the beginning, so I'll be able to just to go along.
Down because we have in front of the town, but that's a good thought. So, which is, which is, which is
Um, I was just gonna say, a point of clarification, it would not be a change order. Um, we got, we have pricing for Norton for an additional two-hour meeting, which was $750. So they are aware that there may be some interest in it. Um, basically, that would just be added to their contract price and it would just be assumed to be part of the scope of work. So it wouldn't require um change orders only after you sign the contract.
Okay.
So.
Anything further? I want to say that.
We're awarding the contract to Norton.
Plus $1,000.
Okay, bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Everyone.
Looking forward to this.
Well, town man, please.
And included in your agenda packet is the, and I stress preliminary financial report for the month of June. Um, we are still receiving um some invoices and so our expense numbers will undoubtedly change. Um, there are also certain revenues that are still um not yet final, including investment earnings for the quarter that ended June 30th. Uh, just some highlights of the report. Um, preliminary FY 2024 revenues exceed the budgeted amount by $106,409. Um, I'm sure this will not surprise any of you. The primary contributing factor through the averages, income tax receipts, uh, which exceeded budget by $156,823. Um, some other revenue accounts that have come in higher than anticipated include, but are not limited to, revenue from rural property tax and other receipts. Um, these variances actually were envisioned um in preparing the FY 2025 budget and calculating the carryover amount. Although I will acknowledge that income tax, um, I thought it would come in about $800,000. It actually exceeded that. Um, so to some degree, as I mentioned, um, revenues coming in higher was envisioned when in calculating the carryover amount. Um, just as a reminder, there are certain revenue sources that are restricted by law and those will be reserved at, at year end. So they will basically um be recognized as revenues. Um, the final amounts um are known. Um, those amounts will be swept as they're required by law. In one case, um, to the reserve accounts. So that is true of highway user revenues, uh, which is account 3.1, State of Maryland. We did not have any eligible projects during fiscal year 2024. And so by law, those funds must be reserved. Um, we have also been reserving the Verizon Capital PIG funds. These have a very specific use in accordance with the franchise agreement. Um, on the expense side, um, based on the information we have available at this time, operating expenses um are roughly $167,000 under the budgeted amount. Um, at year end, the full amount of the contingency account remain unexpended, accounting for $40,000 dollars of that $167,000 or about 24%. Um, once again, in preparing the FY 2025 budget and calculating the prior year carryover amount, um, the contingency fund was assumed to be unexpended. the contingency fund was assumed to be unexpended. Some other areas where we have savings at this time are overall personnel expenses, kind of town administration, infrastructure and equipment, and cost for town services were less than anticipated. Are there any questions about the preliminary financial report?
Is the lease with Black Market completed?
It is not. We are, they have raised unexpected and unanticipated issues, primarily surrounding the square footage that I had presented to you in June, even though that had been previously agreed to. So we are attempting to work through those issues. At, at this juncture, the position that the mayor and I have discussed is that we brought forward to you in June what had been agreed to and that we're expecting them to abide by that.
What other issues about that?
So, so to refresh everyone's memory, we had the Penn Place building basically measured according to BOMA standards. Don't ask me what BOMA stands for, but it is essentially the standard that is used for commercial leasing purposes. So what BOMA does is, in addition to the physical square footage of the space of a particular tenant, it also assigns a load factor which is attributing a portion of the hallways, elevators, mechanical systems, recognizing that those tenant spaces cannot exist without those other spaces. Penn Place is, you know, is an unusual building, obviously, given its historic nature. The load factor for the building is extremely high compared to what you might see, obviously, in a straight-up, high-rise, commercial office building. When we had the building measured, the restaurant owners were provided with a copy of the full BOMA report pointing out, you know, they could, basically, it was a fairly substantial document. We offered them the opportunity to ask questions, to have their own measurements conducted, to make any space available to them, should they wish to have their own measurements taken, and they elected not to do that. And obviously, what that load factor being as high as it is, is it took their physical square footage and, you know, greatly expanded it. So I, I can't speak to the restaurant ownership and management and what internal discussions did or did not take place. All I know is that I have in writing that they accepted the square footage and that was also confirmed by their attorney when we were wrapping up the final details before your June meeting to make sure that I knew what I was bringing forward to you all. So it's obviously if you substantially reduce the square footage, it substantially reduces the revenue that the town will yield from the lease. So that, I haven't had a chance to fully look at it. I had asked that their attorney mark up the draft lease that I sent to them on June 11, and that basically they tried to get all the issues on the table, that we were not interested in trying to handle this piecemeal, but in kind of glancing through the red line version that was sent this afternoon, there are several areas that simply stayed to be discussed between the parties. So I, I can't tell you specifically what they are requesting in terms of a reduction in square footage, but I can tell you I just did some calculations just to kind of see. If we reduce it by even five percent, it basically takes the revenue that the town would yield below what Black Market had actually offered us in the very first round of negotiations that went on for months. So I, you know, that's kind of where we're at right now. At this point, we are, we did sign a letter agreement, which was always intended to bridge the lease from the middle of June to July 1st. Obviously, when we did that, we were not expecting that we would still not have a fully signed lease as of July 1st. So that, that is sort of the sticky widget. I mean, I think there's some other things, you know, and just quickly looking at the red line version I got mid-afternoon, this is probably the most substantial issue, just in going through it. So I don't know, probably not the best thing to, I think, negotiate in public. But I would say if you have any thoughts about this issue, you know, please contact the mayor or contact me and share your thoughts. But right now, we're kind of at an impasse on this matter.
I just noticed that the hallway where the art gallery is and the area in front of the bathrooms where the water fountain is, has a lot of their equipment stored there. I don't know if that's their space or our space, but it seems like there's a lot of their use going on in there.
That's, that's, Mayor Keller made the same observation and in conveying to our council, and we did hire a firm that specializes in commercial leasing matters. The Ron Boat also had the chance to review the lease before we sent it to them. He made the same, Mayor Keller, that has made the same observation, and that was one of the things I ask our, our legal counsel to convey to them, that if they want to make an argument that they're not using the hallways. You know, Exhibit A is looking at everything that's stored back to the bathrooms, all the waiting seating that is in the hallway. So I, I, I think this is probably the most difficult issue to resolve. And like, as I said, I, it kind of came out of left field because I do have in writing from one of the owners of the restaurant and who signed the prior lease that they were fine with it. So it appears that they're either fully grasping the financial impact, or there were some internal discussions between the parties that had not taken place, is my best guess.
Is already to sign the lease while we're on the summer break?
Typically, either the mayor or I could sign it. The way it was structured is it's for Mayor Keller's signature. I, I think the issue, which once again, I would suggest that you either, you know, contact the mayor or contact me or both of us via email is to, to share your thoughts on this issue and to what extent you want the town to bend on it.
Well, thanks, Megan. Well, I'm going to take a narrow view of your authorities, which is, was based on all those recitations of the elements that had been agreed to after the arms-length group stage of negotiation. She would not grant us into the record on June 10th, if they had not been agreed to. And I was then given the authority to sign a lease based on those representations. You did not give me authority to renegotiate, and I'm not going to.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of take it or leave it?
And so, so their current lease runs out at the end of this month. So I would already ran that.
Yeah, we extended it on a month-by-month basis, but I, obviously, there is a point in time at which this matter needs to be resolved. It, it just can't keep up. Because right now, we're operating on a month-to-month basis on the same parameters as the lease that was signed in 2004. And as we talked about back in June, the rates are considerably below market rates for restaurants in this area.
So, so the view that you have would would sort of cap them on their month-to-month very soon, right? If they don't, I mean, I guess we already signed this.
In legal terms, they are permanent tenants and servants. They have no lease.
Okay.
Well, they, if I may, they have a, on a month-to-month basis, they have a continuation of the lease that expired June 14th. So there is an, an operating structure. I just don't think we endlessly want to keep operating on that structure. And I would echo the mayor's comments. I mean, part of the reason, you know, besides just timing, we brought it to you in June, is because we had reason to believe that all the issues were resolved. And the minutes you adopted earlier tonight, as the mayor was saying, basically gave the mayor the authority to sign a lease that was, that incorporated the provisions that I outlined at your meeting in June, because, you know, there were certain little kind of language requirements, things of that nature, but the core aspects of the lease are going to be the square footage, the rates, what's included. And we had no reason to think as of June 10th that those issues were in dispute. The only issue from a monetary standpoint that, you know, was unresolved was some at least nominal amount to, for the shed that they had on tenant property. That was literally the only issue that was unresolved as of June 10th.
So, so isn't there a problem if we allow this to continue and to, I mean, should there be a limit as to the negotiation period so that this, this opportunity for the town is not lost every month indefinitely?
We, if I may, Mayor Keller, we have conveyed to our council and asked that they convey to the council for the restaurant that there is a shelf life here, that we cannot continue operating indefinitely.
Can the town council request a monthly in, information about this until it's resolved? Can it be part of the reporting?
Absolutely, and you know, I think we're, we're two months out from your meeting in September. That's a considerably long period of time to allow the situation to continue.
Now, we can always hold a special meeting if for some reason it turned out that there was something reasonably changed in an effort to get this thing signed, or whatever it might.
Yeah.
I mean, just out of curiosity, for the record, how long, how much notice do we have to give them if they have to vacate?
Yeah, let me get that answer from our legal counsel. I am tentatively scheduled to talk to him at some point, as I said, and Mayor Keller, I will send you what I received today, this afternoon. Yeah, so like, I think we can certainly update you on that. And I, I do have a question into him after Chris and I had some correspondence of, now that we're on this month-to-month thing, what is the legal requirement in terms of notice in, in the event that we terminate that month-to-month?
I had a, a, a meeting with Jeff Black yesterday, I guess, and just keep in mind that they recently closed two restaurants.
So I knew they closed.
Restaurant in Tacoma Park, Republic, I think it was called, and those Addies up in, up off of Montrose, in whatever that area is.
Republic was closed quite a while ago. So why would we get our lease? Or, if it was stolen, it's something they could raise months.
You know, see. Yeah, you're correct. Republic was closed some time ago.
Right.
So I was, I had not heard about Addies, but.
Back to the.
Yeah, so just to kind of give you all an update on the service transition to Ecology Services, obviously, July 1st marked the official start of our contract with them as our new hauler for trash recycling and yard waste. We are serviced by a team of three, all of whom have been with Ecology for more than a decade. So we wanted to welcome William, Jose, and Walter to Garrett Park. As you all may recall, approximately, not quite a month ago, we did circulate a questionnaire to collect information about where residents keep their trash, to try to make sure that Ecology knew where to look. But also, the way Kayla structured the survey was to give residents an opportunity, I think I said, to share any unique quirks. Part of that is also code for if you have a dog or something else that the haulers might want to be aware of. So we did publish that questionnaire on GPML, the town forum, on the website. Town staff posted flyers with the QR code, a link to the questionnaire, to power polls, set up a bulletin board. And through Kayla's efforts, she also connected with a resident who was helpful in getting some Garrett Park students who needed service learning hours to go and distribute surveys to every household with the link in a QR code. So as of July 1st, we had unfortunately only 110 households that had responded to the questionnaire. I did do a push on Friday, specifically asking for residents' assistance that as of this afternoon, we had 182, is that right, Kayla? People who had responded. So we are thankful for everyone who's taken the time to respond. I think one of the things we may want to give some consideration to is kind of doing another kind of push and basically set a date. And Kayla and I had some conversation about this this morning, where we basically set a date at which if people have not weighed in, that we assume that the default is curbside, because right now, to try to, as they're trying to learn the town, and obviously, we had a a few missed collections that were, I think, most of which, the first Tuesday trash, I think they were all picked up that same day, Kayla said, not all. Yeah, I don't know what Kayla was shooting.
So we did have a few missed collections. Ecology, for those collections that were reported early enough, was able to do a same-day corrective collection and get that resolved. We did have a couple of folks who late in the afternoon, early evening, or potentially the next morning, reported to us. And we were generally able to coordinate a next-day correction. So we are very much in communication with our Ecology team, especially during this transition period, as everyone is getting to know each other, the residents getting to know the new guys, the new guys getting to know Garrett Park. We are communicating. At this point, and I am adding the caveat that I was out for a couple of days, so I don't have 100% of the data, but I feel confident saying we have had across the first week of collection, fewer than 20 missed collections, at least half of which were resolved within the same day of being reported. We are obviously working with Ecology to make sure that any trouble spots are being flagged, that we are getting them the information, that we are connecting with residents, make sure that they know that their issues have been acknowledged, reported, and here's our plan to correct it. Like Barb said, we did see another push to get respondents in the survey. At this point, with 182 households, we're just over 50% of the households we're collecting from. So no rollout is perfect. I do want to give credit to not only Ecology, but also residents and the team that did the street sweeping on Tuesday morning. It would have been a very challenging time to navigate Garrett Park roads. Everyone handled it with grace and with poise, and I am deeply grateful that everyone was prepared to yield and allow others to maneuver as needed.
How much did you collect for the owner firm?
So the donation for the outgoing hauler came in from approximately 35 people totaling $2,230. We are giving another day or two just to see if any late-arriving mail trickles in due to the holiday, but folks are very good about getting their donations in very, very promptly by the cutoff date that was suggested. And Garrett Park's generosity is to its credit. We are planning to have Mary, our accountant, cut that check in the next couple of days so we can get it out. And Brian Schumacher, who is the owner of the outgoing company, has been made aware of these donations are coming. He will make sure that it gets to the appropriate folks who previously served Garrett Park.
Great, thank you.
That was one of my questions. I want to make sure it goes to the people servicing that himself.
Actually, because they're not, it's not going through the hauler itself, Key Sanitation. We, we actually have the appointments and addresses because we have to mail them 1099s.
Oh, okay, see, now it's in the individual.
The checks will be mailed directly to those four individuals. I did confirm with the owner of Key Sanitation that the four people were still the same ones that we had as of, you know, when we made the payments in January. So anyway, you know, I think it's, it's in terms of just suggesting that there be kind of a default cutoff for curbside, which does not mean that someone still can't contact us and be added to rear yard, side yard. But I think in our collective zeal to make sure that we didn't miss somebody, then we had some folks who were, you know, upset that Ecology was on their property. But you, you don't really know whether or not, you know, someone just didn't have trash that day, they're out of town, they just didn't have enough to put trash out for two days. We did have two close calls where the Ecology folks were almost bitten by dogs, thankfully, they were not. Our initial thought, and certainly Kayla and I are open to any thoughts to the contrary, but our initial thought is we do another kind of push for the survey, you know, clarifying, because I think there seemed to be some question of whether or not it was clear enough. That we're asking people to fill it out, even if they want a curbside collection, just so we really know where they should be looking. And to keep the survey open through kind of early afternoon, noon on Monday. So we would have had at that point, you know, a full month opportunity for people to fill out the survey. So I don't know if you all have any reaction to that suggestion, if that's not allowing enough time, but we're really trying to be sensitive to folks that Ecology is not going on their property when they don't want them to. But also making sure their trash gets picked up. And I think there just has to be a point where we at least have a default that it's curbside unless we're advised otherwise.
But somebody could change it later.
They could change it anytime. And we'll make sure that that's known. But we would like to at least be able to tell Ecology, here's, yeah, here are the people who responded. Here are the people we know want rear yard side, but here's where their trash should be. And in the absence of that, it's curbside. But certainly, yes, 100%, someone can change their preference at any time. And in the absence of that, it's curbside. But certainly, yes, hun- a hundred percent, someone can change their preference at any time.
I'm trying to keep track of it. Do they have like some sort of a spreadsheet of all the different addresses or map or what do they do?
The thing about Survey Monkey is I am able to download a very large Excel spreadsheet of everyone's responses. That includes property location, phone number to call if there's an issue. One of the required questions was where do you keep your trash? But there was also the opportunity for folks to provide additional comment or context. If there's an easier way to access it by, you know, cutting across a neighbor's lawn who is accustomed to it. If they should be cognizant that if they don't see anything at the curb, it's fine, or that perhaps they have bungee cords holding a can shut so raccoons don't get into it. There's all sorts of comments, all sorts of contexts. You, as the property owner, you as the individual living at this location are going to know best the quirks. And that's part of why we wanted to make sure we had an open-ended optional question to say, what else should we know? Because you've been living on these properties for years that I can't speculate at, and you've figured out the groove. Ecology is playing very rapid catch-up. And we're trying to make sure they have all the information they need to be quick, to be effective, and to be everything Garrett Park wants them to be.
So is everyone comfortable if we send something out tomorrow, basically asking people to respond by noon on Monday?
Only those people who didn't respond, or do you have to send it out to everybody, even if they've already responded?
Yeah, we don't necessarily, um, yeah, it would have to be everyone because we would have to literally go through and see who responded, who didn't, and do we have contact information for those folks? And not everyone has provided that. Okay.
Which categories and which days?
I. Don't need some guidance on that. Okay. Yeah. And I, I would just mention, because it was a discussion and Kayla's absence on Friday, she was on vacation, that I had with, um, our, the crew supervisor. I think one of the things that we have learned is in some cases, um, residents may have had kind of a private arrangement through Key to actually like go through their backyard and retrieve trash from like a shed that contained other items. Um, I think understandably Ecology is a little bit concerned because when you start having their employees entering a structure that contains other things, it could raise the prospect that accusations of theft or anything else. So I, um, did share.
Accidentally throwing out stuff they shouldn't have been thrown out.
Yeah. So I did, um, share with the crew supervisor, um, that there was certainly, when we mentioned rear side yard service, we certainly did not mean entering a structure to retrieve it, that it needed to be kind of in a, you know, visible without having to enter something. Um, so I just want to mention that, because that may be a change for some folks. Um, kind of moving on from, uh, trash, I did want to mention that on, um, June twenty-sixth, we had a pre-construction meeting with SFMS, um, which for the Road and Sidewalk Improvements Project, in addition to myself, uh, Jason Azar, and Clark Azar and Associates, and Maintenance Supervisor George Miller were in attendance, as well as the project manager for SFMS. Um, as you all know, the project includes a number of items, including a replacement of the Waverly sidewalk between Montrose and Penn Place, installation of a speed bump on Wayman, uh, paving of several town streets, excuse me, and the reconfiguration of the Argyle Kenilworth intersection. Um, I checked in today with SFMS. I was hopeful that I would have the written schedule, um, submitted by them, uh, by tonight's meeting. Um, they said it would be forthcoming within the next few days. Uh, the initial indication was that they would start work with the Waverly sidewalk, uh, component of the project. Um, as you said, most likely before the end of July. We'll see when we get the schedule, if that's in fact the case. One of the things that we emphasized with them is that, um, you know, schedules can obviously change due to weather or other factors, but especially with it being summertime and people traveling, that um, they needed to give us a schedule that allowed us to communicate with residents what's going to be happening when. I think this will become uh, particularly critical when they get to road paving, because we need to make sure that someone's car is not on the street, uh, when the, you know, obviously they're bringing in a milling machine. Um, you know, we certainly hope to avoid this, but, um, you know, we are exploring. I'm having a contract with a towing company because if they're there with a miller and someone's car is left, we have to be able to do that. Um, my understanding from Jason Azar is thank, thankfully, we've been able to communicate and we've never had to tow a car. And I'm hoping that will still be the case. Um, one of the specific items of discussion um, was the reconfiguration of the Argyle Kenilworth intersection, and we both Mr. Azar and town staff emphasized the importance of maintaining driveway access for the residents of forty-seven eleven Ark Isle during construction. Um, you know, there's still some details to work out, but SFMS's project manager indicated that this, this could be achieved. Um, he mentioned in his comments, his own ninety-six-year-old mother, um, and how, um, you know, he would want to make sure that, you know, she wasn't inconvenienced by any construction. So I'll keep you posted on that.
Comments?
Um, they're town streets, so there's, there's basically we're the ones who are.
The sidewalks, they don't need permits?
Um, there's an historic area work permit that we secured some time ago.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, just the renovation of the town office. As you know, we've had it fits and starts. I'm, um, if you haven't dropped by recently, feel free to do so. I was on, because you know, I was on vacation for almost two weeks. Um, during that time, we did get the WSSC and Montgomery County inspections that allowed them to close in um, the open areas that had to be open framing. Um, so during the time I was off, the drywall was hung, so it came back and basically it's actually now starting to look like something of tenant space A, which was a relief. Um, we will have activity this week and we're getting, um, very close to being able to have the final inspection for tenant space A. Um, we have both the, um, kitchen cabinets and countertop and completion of the low voltage work are both scheduled to get underway uh, this Wednesday. Um,
Have we decided we're going to lease tenant space A?
Or tenant space A is the area we're keeping. So that's. Um, yeah, that's. Tenants B or Rivers, as many people call it. Uh, that was a decision which you all, um, and some of you were not part of the council at the time, but what you decided in August of twenty twenty-two, I think I got my date straight, um, is that once construction was complete, this item would be put on, um, on agenda for you all to talk about that specifically. Yeah, right now, um, tenant space B is where everything that got dislocated, relocated, everything else.
Um.
Yeah. And the, um, one of the things we, staff will be in there, um, huddled on each other. Uh, Jeanette was doing a little drawing to see what fit. Um, when they go to, uh, there is a, a settlement crack that one wall of his office. Um, and when they go to, you know, that's plaster to repair that and then paint Kayla's office, we actually have to relocate our server because obviously some servers don't do well with a bunch of flying plaster dust and, uh, paint dust. Um, for staff to be able to, um, have access, you cannot VPN in from the same network that your server is in. So the server will be relocated to tenant space B and basically, um, we think we can fit two staff people in there. Um, so we're going to try to schedule the work both for our sake, as well as for the sake of the restaurant, since they're closed on Monday. Um, there will be a point with the work you all authorized earlier this evening where they're refinishing the floor in, in the existing office space and in the foyer, where obviously we can't be trapped in tenant space B. Uh, but we will need to coordinate that with the restaurant because they're, they have a freezer and their dry goods pantry on the third floor that they will not be able to access for a period, you know, hopefully only a day or, you know, at most two days. Um, so anyway, that's moving along. Um, kind of an update on town, town hall funding. As I reported last month, um, both Senator Cardin and Senator Van Hollen jointly endorsed our application for congressionally directed spending for the town hall renovation project. As I shared at that time, the next step was all the projects would then be uh, reviewed by the Senate Appropriations Committee. Um, and they will basically determine which ones will be funded. So I had just gotten back from vacation. On June twenty-fifth, I got a panicked email from a member of Senator Carden's legislative staff advising me that the National Park Service, which is being offered for our particular application, had raised eligibility concerns about major components of the project, um, indicating that a very limited part would qualify for funding under the Save America's Treasures program. Um, in talking to Senator Carden's staff member, it was, I mean, looking at, she just cut and pasted the, the notes from the National Park Service reviewer. It was pretty clear that they were not tracking what our project was actually about. Um, so we had the opportunity on, um, very short turnaround time to submit some additional information, trying to clarify why we believed larger components of our project actually were eligible. Um, that information was forwarded that day to the Appropriations Committee and the National Park Service. Um, I did check in with Senator Carden's staff member today to see if we'd gotten any other review comments, hoping it wouldn't be quite the panicked turnaround time of like an hour. Um, and she said she had not heard anything back from them. Um, if she hasn't heard anything back in the next couple of days, she will touch base with them. But as I had shared with the mayor, um, the initial feedback was, well, your bathroom work might qualify. Um, it's like, okay, that's probably not really worth the overhead that would be associated with, um, a federal funding application. Uh, but Senator Carden's office wanted to know if we wanted to move forward. Um, you know, I, I basically said, look, it depends on what the response is to the additional information we submitted. But I said, if all they're paying for is helping us, um, renovate bathrooms, the answer will probably be no. Um, so that's still kind of in a band. I mean, I think just as a reminder, um, we have basically explored, tapped all the major out external funding sources um, at this juncture. Obviously, if there's changes, um, in November, you know, especially in, on the House side, if there are any, um, if the majority party changes, um, you know, there could be a change in terms of a particular HUD program that I had explored that used would probably have been eligible in the past, but not now. But I think we're back where I had shared with some of you back in February, where I thought we would be is, you know, this is the last major funding source that we are still waiting to hear about. Um, and I think at that juncture, and we'll know by the fall, we may even know before then. Um, I think you all just need to have a, a conversation and decide what your next steps are regarding town hall, because there's no, no doubt in my mind whatsoever, and there hasn't been for some time. Um, but the town itself will have to figure out how to, um, address a funding gap. Yes. Um, and there's only a handful of ways to do that. And one is to scale back the project and the other is to come up with more money.
So I may have missed it. You may have said it and I may have missed it, but, um, the, the last option by Weedman, they, they haven't progressed anything. They're waiting for us. Okay.
No, the only work that, um, Weedman has done on town hall is I, I did reach out to them, um, given the tight turnaround time, literally we had, you know, actually we got our information in. Um, I was actually doing something on the town office renovation when Senator Carden's office had called, and it was like, could you have it here by noon? And at that point I looked at my watch and it was twelve twenty-five. Um, so Weedman was very helpful, you know, in terms of just helping to put together some information, um, on very short notice. But no, they're basically at a, at a stomping point right now. Um, the, the last item I just wanted to mention, which is, um, kind of talking about the maintenance team activities, obviously they're busy doing their typical, you know, mowing, mulching, weeding, watering the plants. But I did want to mention something about this building. I had mentioned last month that, um, when the maintenance team was um, repairing the bell rope, which became disconnected in the post-election festivities. Um, and they identified a section of the flat roof here at town hall that required repair. Um, during that repair, um, further problems with the roof were noted by the roofing contractor, specifically that the glue on the overlapping seams is failing. Um, we do have a cost to reseal the seams, which is a short-term fix. Um, that cost will be approximately two thousand dollars. Um, I did want to note that this section of the roof is at the end of its useful life. Um, and like many aspects of this building, whether it's the roof at the back or the siding, these are all items that are anticipated to be addressed as part of the renovation project. So I guess my only point in bringing this up is one is to let you know that we might have another two grand. Um, to, to basically put a patch on a roof that's at the end of its useful life. So I do think that some of these deferred maintenance items, um, as the conversation about town.
There's more coming.
There's more coming and, and, um, there's going to be a point at which, and I'll just use the flat roof section, where we can simply not patch things anymore. And we may, if there's not a decision made on the town hall renovation and its timing, we may have to invest in some of these things to prevent damage to the building.
Right.
We're not quite there, but we're starting to approach that on a number of fronts. Um, so that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions, whether about any of these items, anything else you have interest in.
So what was the town, uh, National Park Service, what were the relevant problems?
Um, so the, if the Save America's Treasures program, which I know Stephen's very familiar with through his work, um, one of the comments, um, and these are just like, you know, snippets that someone sent in an email and they get dropped into mine, um, was well, so, you know, they have to demonstrate that the, the nineteen fifties addition isn't historic. And, and nineteen fifties, you know, properties can be historic, depends on the architectural style. Um, but one of the things with the program is that you, they will not pay for you to basically replicate a historic structure. So I think there was a misunderstanding with what you all have expressed, the right to do with the front of this building, where we're not trying to replicate something, we're trying to restore it to what it was. Um, that's somehow have gotten lost in translation. Um, they typically do not pay for demolition. So, um, you know, it is possible that tearing off the back and reconstructing that um, will not be eligible. So I, the goal of the additional information was to try to come up with kind of costly project elements that we truly do believe fall within the scope of the program. Um, but I think they looked at tearing off, you know, the, the front addition and said, well, that's demolition. So it's like, well, you can call it demolition. We call it restoring the historical accuracy of the building. Um, so just trying to make that clear. I'm sure that they're reviewing tons of applications. Um, the legislative staffer in Carden's office did mention to me that the National Park Service, uh, appeared to be more hyper vigilant than perhaps they had been prior years. Um, whatever the cause of that, whether they felt perhaps they had been lax in enforcing the district provision of program, or there was some concern that she didn't quite understand. Um, but they're apparently, in talking to other legislative staffers for other senators, um, we were not the only ones who were trying to dig ourselves out of a misimpression about our project.
Thank you.
Stay tuned.
Anything further on the town renovation report? We moved on to finish business.
Lighting.
Lighting. So basically what I wanted to say was during my visit, um, to the, you know, in the university, I was spending some time talking with a couple of different places that supply lighting and came up with two, um, places that, uh, um, would be able to supply something that will give us the same thing that we have. And I had a fairly clear mandate from Historic Preservation that, um, it be basically the same as what we have on Strathmore, eight-sided and, um, lantern style with the same type of base in. So I've gone through all that and right now I'm to a point where I need to send Barb something tomorrow. I'd like to, uh, have her take a look at so that I can, we can basically get this thing out and have some people give us some feedback and, um, also give us, uh, some pricing. One thing, a couple of things I will say. First is the most important thing I see right for immediate features to get the concrete, figure out where the concrete is going to go and get that done as part of the sidewalk scope. So we're not worried about that. Second thing is, um, the original, um, drawing that was sent out that Clark Azar had done on using the streetlights that we've got now, those are far more powerful than what we're looking at using because those are HID, which we're not going to use, we're going to use the LEDs. The second thing was they didn't take into account the fact that there's a pole light right there in that corner, meaning that the first light was actually almost directly on a laser thing, which didn't make much sense to me. Unless we want to get rid of it, but even if we want to get rid of it at some point, we could go ahead and drop a pole in there if we decide somebody will do that. But I'm thinking that we don't. So we need to take advantage of that light, which we shifting everything down a little bit.
Have you sent the lighting selection to the engineer?
No, because the, um, information brought from our vendor, which means I send this out, they'll send us back drawings of how many are needed of each type. And based on that, we send that out to the engineer. I expect that to be a pretty quick turnaround because they indicate they could do that in a couple of days. Once they send something out.
Maybe worth looking at, um, taking out that light at the corner or shifting it to the other corner if it's going to affect negatively the, the setting of all the, the more subdued lighting at street level. Is it, there's one of the, um, is it a cover headlight? Yeah, one of the teardrops at the, I guess it's the northeast corner.
Who's going to make that decision?
It'll be a function of whether the others can be spaced and which will be right.
They can be spaced any way we want, so. The truck they're going to use it, the rest of it. The only concern I might have would be to ensure we have sufficient quantity of light across the roadway. But we can probably put one there in that corner, we'll probably do a trek. I can go back, I can look at the original diagram and just see.
I'm sorry, I may have missed this part of the plan.
Yeah, they were expecting, at the meeting we had on the 26th, they were expecting to start the sidewalk work before the end of July.
Exactly. Typically, when we put out sort of broadcast notice in our major projects.
You will.
I think that only needs to be mentioned that it turns me to be a moment as part of a project.
Good idea.
Probably those need to be previous, so if you don't feel that it can survive this year.
Have you decided on what new trees we're planting?
I know Phil and Normandy has run something by Arboretum.
Great, but we're not going to plant them until the fall, I would hope.
Okay, no, they will not, yeah, that will actually be done by the town contractors, not by SFMS.
Good.
What is new business and deal with the way our, our, just take the initiative. Ever now, I think is useful as always. You know, there should be a convention session, you know, for the town. Talking to vendors and talking to our counterparts in other towns. And I was reminded of the, you know, the years to short meetings and each event of a few hours' build. I have a concern here, things that I can remember really help us. You know, we know this went to the concert and the pop stage.
And the only thing I would say is Chris and I spent some time talking to some engineering firms who were specializing in stormwater management. And I think we feel that it would be a good initiative to figure out what the attorney said about the lawsuit and what other towns are facing the similar situation and try to start looking at what the plans and designs are that we historically have done about stormwater management in the town and then get some of these firms to give us some proposals about what we should be doing.
I went to some of the same vendors because they had said, you should talk to Lisa, she was already here.
Right.
And learn just how expensive some of these systems are, even the cheap ones. And to also join with you in seeking to see what the county can do for this.
Right.
Well, I was going to say, we have to be careful if we bring somebody in from the aspect that, until we get this thing resolved, I guess, right? We don't want to limit our chances of.
Correct.
But I'm also wondering.
Limit our chances of what?
Of being able to get what we want.
From?
From the county. In other words, if we bring in, if we bring in an engineering company to do a bunch of work, that might be a reason for counties.
Say it's our problem, not theirs. But I don't think we're talking about doing work, we're talking about understanding what the scope of work is that might need to be done. I don't think we're talking about signing any contracts or starting anything.
We could be asking the county to do it once that, what is done. That's why I think I was sitting here and Jamie McClintock was next to me. Six years ago, we suggested doing that. I was flatly arrived by the now.
We paid for the, the spoke set. And then we try and reimburse them.
Yeah, if, I mean, just as a reminder, you're in your capital budget. And once again, I think anything that's involving legal matters, I would caution you all to be judicious in what you say. But there is $75,000 in your capital budget to, the scope of which still needs to be sort of defined. As you might recall from the budget process, Clark Azar had provided a range, potential range of $50,000 to $100,000. I went down the middle. But and Chris and I talked about this, touched on it very briefly. We need to have some discussion when you're off recess about, besides just the technical aspects, you know, what else you want to see as part of that assessment? Part of what drives cost, obviously, is the extent of community meetings that are held. And that needs to be worked out so we can get pricing for that assessment.
Well, the first step has to be that we've got to get whatever plans and designs we've got for the existing stormwater management has to be the first step.
And some of that exists.
Right.
Some of those documents are in legal files, which Ron Bolt has shared.
Right.
There's been very limited work done by the town over the years, but it certainly was enough work to catch the county's attention and use it as a club.
Right.
So some of that does exist because we had pulled it as.
That we bring in, you're going to need to start with that.
Correct, yeah, I don't need looking at county mapping and things like that. You look at some of the county mapping, and this was part of our discussions with the county. You can look at the county mapping system and there essentially is no system in Garrett Park. That's very clear from looking at it. So there were isolated, very discreet projects, most of which we would know about because there were easements recorded, but not all the work done by the town was actually put into a town easement. So there's some gaps even in our own information based on what was done and how it was handled at the time.
Well, do we need to, should we consult before we do anything with the attorney?
As far as. Did before I ever brought it forward in the budget to make sure that doing an assessment in and of itself was not problematic. And they deemed that it was not.
Oh, great.
Because essentially, it's a town attempting to get sort of the lay of the land and to know what even the scope of the problem is. So they have already vetted that before it was ever brought forward to you.
Oh, good.
Early this year.
It's pretty common to have some sort of a study that shows like where you do have the issues. And one of the big pictures I've heard this topic talked about every single year I've been on council and even before then, it's just, oh, he talks about it's like this big over stormwater management is so expensive and all these like things. But nobody, not many people here are really practitioners in it, but there's just a lot of different decisions you had to go through. Like you had to figure out what your goals are. And that's what that kind of a study would be, is that are you trying to handle really top-end storms so that they don't cause damage? Or are you trying to retain more water to kind of recharge an aquifer or something in between? Are you talking about the quality of the runoff? Are you talking about the quality of the runoff? And I haven't heard any of that kind of thing be discussed. I think it would be important to have like a real stormwater practitioner kind of lead a discussion on that. So the real goals of the town could be figured out and then see, if I find that the problems are less, less daunting than they seem.
And I think part of this, you know, I could just say from a community meeting that I'd asked Azar to attend with me, is it's kind of an education process. I'd gotten a request from somewhere to put an inlet in. And I think part of this was an understanding that you just don't put an inlet in, that there has to be a pipe and the pipe has to connect to something. And, you know, part of this is any place outside of Garrett Park is going to have to connect to a system, whether it's on, you know, private property. And typically what happens, which was part of the discussion we were having with these residences, if our connection to a county system requires an upsizing of the pipe, it's almost, and this will probably resonate with Lisa, it's almost sort of the same principle you see in development. If you're the triggering factor to cause an upsizing in the pipe, then typically you would require a private developer to pay that upsizing charge. I suspect, depending on the way our conversations evolve or devolved with the county, they would view it the same way. So this particular property actually is very close to the location of your new home, where we were meeting with residents. Obviously, there's Parkside that is right on the other side. And I don't think there's probably any doubt that any connection from Garrett Park from, if we were to put a pipe in on Montrez or someone was to put a pipe in, it would require an upgrade of the system that is on Parkside's property. And as things stand today, the town would be the financially responsible party in all likelihood.
One of the first steps I thought might be helpful for Chris is to get the report from, was it Ron Bolt? I mean, who did the assessment of what the, what the legal.
Chris has that.
You have that, Chris? The other counties that are in this, in that document.
Yeah, the other municipalities.
Right. Yeah.
It was very, very, yes, solid.
Thank you.
Okay. We've given a little hour on, I want to say, much time on the next day. There are rules of thought under the general will break of housing affordability to prevent duplexes, duplexes and multiflexes in single-family zone. Single-family zones in Montgomery County. Partly, the town takes advantage of certain landies controls, most notably setbacks and lower elevation. Under the 2006 statute, it gives us that authority in single-family zone. In single-family zones. If the initial to the net that sort of development, if like this, like this, and this, they will not be covered in that qualifier, that our authority extends only to single-family zones, store buildings. So and a large number of, in Montgomery County municipalities, are seeing direct legislation. And we are seeking to have the single-family qualify on the 2006, enabling legislation. So that any open space involved if enacted by the municipalities under that authority will remain in place for duplexes and multiplexes.
The setbacks and the open space and those kinds of.
And for. For other things that were authorized under that statute. The storing effect that we have not taken advantage of. The height, density and mass. All right, so, working with this letter, the Congress will not go out until September. I will simply undertake, keep you abreast of developments and look for, look for authorization to sign on to that letter at the September meeting.
Okay.
Well, that subject is a bit difficult. I don't want to see, you know, the third boardary graph that I sent around something passing.
Yeah, you just struck single-family.
Well, if you care to finalize the motion to authorize the mayor to sign on with the multi municipality letter with respect to, you know, such and such, I don't know. That would be.
I don't think that was.
Okay.
I'll set it.
Well, just a couple of discussion points. There were, I think, two other letters to this effect. Probably done, there's one that I think Joanna Walsh had signed on. And there was another one that I gave all the information, the khaki chantrey. And I think she signed one on this issue before. It was on the, it was on like a multi, multi municipality, sort of a consortium about, I'm talking about the Thrive 2050, I think it is planned. This was the big crux issue for a lot of places. So it may be helpful for you to pull those if you haven't already pulled them to see if there's anything you'd like to, you know, stress differently from past efforts. And I think towns like Chevy Chase has always been, and we, it sounds like they still are nice. But hopefully, it all can be successful to have single-family stricken. But I, I would suspect that advocates of making these changes are anticipating that places like us and Chevy Chase would want to have that stricken and already have their trenches set up kind of to fight that. So it's probably going to be a tough, tough battle. And it's kind of like what we dealt with with the small cell towers that there, when that all came out, that there are groups that were doing that, they were really trying to avoid any kind of municipality customization beyond that. And we managed to get some in, so it's not like we can't win this one. But I just think it's going to be an uphill battle. And I think the armies are kind of on the other side, already positioned, so.
Okay, we'll look at the priority of it. I suspect also we expect to have a mission, possibly an effective change statement.
True, yeah.
That the municipality pledge to not subject multiplexes to controls that were more stringent than single family.
Okay.
Simply divide, single-stem for all.
I mean, yeah, one to four, okay. Yeah, I think the last efforts, they were, they were in our county based on the, when the planning board was approving the Thrive 2050 and then kind of anticipation of the county trying to change the zoning code later on to enforce it. Kind of like what they did with accessory dwelling units a couple of years ago.
Thought I'm giving the organization, we see the, uh, letter on. Um, now, okay, it's, okay, I'm.
But really, that was another player is on the way out, Sonya's on the way. And I, at some point, we started drafting a budget, I'll have a budget items in the archives.
When is she starting, Sonya?
She's already started.
Already started.
And when is she working?
Where is it?
I'm going to jump in here, Luca. Sonya has nailed down her schedule currently to be a kind of full day on Tuesday to make sure she's available to provide staff support as well as general community support. And then Friday afternoons are when she's overlapping with Claire. So they're available if residents need them. But currently, they're very much focused on making sure Sonya has access to everything she needs to, that the quirks of the Garrett Park past surface, past perfect system, my apologies, I'm tripping over my tongue, are set up and that she has a good plan to ensure smooth continuity of any projects. So we're looking at Tuesdays and a partial day on Friday. It did look like when I was looking at the staff and contractor's schedule earlier today, it does look like, not this Saturday, but the one that follows, Sonya is going to log some time to overlap with when the farm stand is open. So it's not going to be every weekend, but we will try and make sure that Sonya is available on that kind of peak weekend timeframe. So she's been settling in well so far. And I know she and Claire have both been putting in a lot of hard work to make sure that everything runs smoothly as they handle this transition.
Right.
Still, if you want. Often, how to read.
Yeah, I want to make it much, make it much, much shorter than what Sam was planned. By the way, that's because I've just been so busy, I haven't been able to do as much work as have been kind of scrolling around on my computer and on my brain on these topics. I just don't have time to make diagrams, but then also, we'd have a conversation with Mayor Keller about some of it. It could be, you know, tricky to like put things out. It's hard for me as someone that, you know, worked on planning and development for a dozen years and now work as a capex planner. It's usually my day job, I'll get asked like, go figure out how to make this place better in a cost-effective manner. So I can, I'm usually looking five steps ahead. But I think I'm going to try to hold off on some of it. I think I have a lot of coalescence around changes that could be made to improve the town that I think a vast majority of the town would be in favor of. But I'm going to kind of try to hold them within myself for now and kind of, as 76ers did and filled out, we kind of addressed the process for a little while. So and part of my trepidation was about that is I, I lived through the council of 2018. Um, so, and, and part of my trepidation was about that is I, yeah, I, I lived through the council, the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two years, which were pretty trying times for council. And it's one of the concerns I've always had about, like, there was a slew of committees that were maybe just closed on one meeting. And myself and another council member, we both objected, I objected to having so many committees that seemed superfluous. And I knew there was a lot of intent to kind of like bypass council. And the other council member at the time had said, no, you should, you know, that, that mayor shouldn't be making a committee. It's just all of, you know, that person's friends and the same kind of viewpoint, which, you know, I, I felt very strongly about it. And I, I think there was a fair amount of that being done now, so hopefully it's kind of being correcting itself. Um, but the way things had started out then, it's, it's, it's almost like the opposite of the way I've seen good planning processes work. Like it's, um, especially for public projects, you get something where, um, you, you're asked to, as a consultant, you're asked to do something that's for the broad benefit of the community. And you need to be sensitive of, um, the surroundings and adjacent neighbors. And, you know, whether it's too noisy or it's unsightly, or maybe it's an incompatible use, all those kind of things. And it's almost like Garrett Park did things the opposite. There was a Parks and Open Space Committee that was formed, what, like five-ish years ago? It was almost all made up of, I think, except for one person, it was probably due to the objection of the other council member. It was all immediate neighbors of parks, which that's kind of the inverse of how things should be done. It should be, you know, the, the greater benefit of the community with, with sensitivity. It shouldn't be made by, you know, kind of a nucleus of people that might have a very localized point of view, trying to decide for everyone else. I'm getting more and more comfortable, and I think it helped today to kind of maybe be less worried about that. Then to kind of, um, see it and to maybe to borrow their phrase, our former colleague Hans Wagner would always say, and he was from Missouri, and it's, that's Chevy State stuff, like kind of maybe shown. Um, that, that's gonna be processes that really can benefit all three hundred and sixty-five households in town. Um, one of the things that's been swirling around in my mind is about town hall. Uh, whilst all of you know, I've been working on this for like eight years now, trying to, you know, crack this nut. And it's, it's probably one of the nuts to crack, but um, but one of the things that came out of that shrap to put together in twenty old team was that, um, residents were generally pretty comfortable with the functions of this building. They would like a better version of it, but it wasn't something where they wanted to add a whole lot of different things. And then to, to me, that kind of makes it seem like we need to really, really kind of right-size how we spend. I think we need to make this place great, but not, not go overboard. Like, I have a few ideas, and I'm trying to pull together between now and the September meeting that might be able to show some alternatives. I think we, we might be able to do this project real well for, um, about the amount of money that we have. About the amount of money that we have available now, uh, which will free up some money for other projects, which I think would be important to me. Um, I, I had a note, then kind of like a short, oh, right, uh, Yama Park. I think one of the, um, one of the things that's always been sticking around in my mind is, and we touched on it a little bit earlier, I think it, it's like what I was just saying. I remember I go, I think all these parks and other things, they had to be for the broad benefit of the community. And the thing that's always kind of struck me about Yandel is we're, we're taking a house lot that, as I always say, it was a tear down house, even if it wasn't um, donated. Um, if, if that was kind of like the developer that was here earlier, if it would have been replaced by another house, it would have been, I just looked at kind of like what the average tax income is per house, dividing it by, you know, three hundred and sixty or whatever the number was. And then it would be in a part of average kind of thing. So it's like, it's really kind of, the town is forfeiting five thousand dollars a year roughly, times thirty years. That's a hundred, you know, if I just looked at it as kind of like roughly now a generation is, yeah, it's probably more, it could be more than that, yeah. That's probably conservative. It's just, it's just the amount or like the slice of it that goes in the town budget, not the taxes that that house would pay. Cause a lot of it goes to the county, the state doesn't come to here. But I was talking about the, the part that the town would have is a, you know, kind of a contribution from another house. That's, that's kind of like a negative one hundred and fifty K. And then I looked at it, it was kind of, on top of that, we're talking about spending, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-five of town money. Um, so that makes it two seventy-five, and it's probably a very conservative number. If you figure it's like fifteen thousand dollars per year for tree plantings and removals and other maintenance in that place, it's probably more than that. But that could add up over thirty years to four hundred and fifty K. So you're talking about, and that's, that's if you take away the silver lining of, you know, we're getting all this, you know, due to Barb and um, others' efforts to get the, the grant money of two hundred and fifty thousand. That's, even if you knock that out, it's just in-town spending or town kind of forfeiting, it's like over seven hundred thousand dollars in thirty years. It's, so to me, it's not the other way around, but I, I feel like we had to have a really good use for three hundred and sixty-ish households. Not everybody's gonna go there, but like, it can't just be a empty set of woods. Um, I, I feel like that's just not a fair deal for the taxpayers. So to the point where, um, so I wanna keep kind of urging that there is something useful there. I don't think it should just be an ordinary playground. I don't think it should be a meditation place either, but something in between. But, um, but something where there is like a real benefit to the community. And I, I don't mean to believe to that point, but to the point, I had me thinking about this sort of thing. If, if there was another house in town where, and I wanted to do the same thing, I, I don't know if it came, and maybe Chris or Phil might remember. Um, whether it, um, came through as a council vote or if the mayor at that time accepted it. But I feel like at the very least, it should be a, a council vote, and these kind of numbers should be looked at. Like, um, if it is really restrictive, I mean, the idea is to say, thank you, but no. Um, or even potentially a referendum so that the whole town could kind of say, but we wanna take this on as a, you know, as a, you know, this, this equation over time. It just, just food for thought on that. Um, we did, okay, you'd have to by charter or ordinance, so I'm glad, I'm assuming I'm glad to do that. But I, I wonder again if it would be in some, there's a referendum.
You just.
Yes, so, yeah, this could be the same kind of thing, that at least had some historic value, so, and, um, you know, possibly that would have been the same thing. I think this building was a referendum whether, whether to purchase it or not. So, you know, actually, I know this building was, so, but I don't know if it changes that if it's not a purchase, if it's a donation. I mean, I, it's not meant to decide, I'm just, just a thought I had about it. I think those are, I mean, most of the key thoughts, you know, I'll try to, I'm hoping to get less and less concerned, concerned. Um, but I just, I just want, I want good things for all of the town. Um, I hope you become more and more comfortable that we're gonna get there, so.
So with respect to town hall, by September, you should have a better, you know, I mean, uh, potential federal funding. And the figures, which are currently reflected as the, uh, June, the November, uh, will have been finalized this year and the two weeks. Uh, and then they verge somewhat in what we have here, what we will have as on fifty. Um, and so it would make sense to really line up consideration in town hall and, um, we'll take, we'll be in a position now, a lot more about funding. Um, and following the network ambition and product, we can just begin to make decisions. Here, here, um, and, um. If we really wanna consider lost opportunity across shallow panel property, I have some suggestions, but I suggest not without that one. You know?
Hmm.
Um, is there anything further in the way of town offices? I will entertain questions to the chairman.
I'll leave.